At this time, please silence your electronics. And if you wish to submit a testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Just a friendly reminder, please do not approach the dais at any moment. If you need assistance, you may ask one of the sergeant-at-arms. And at this time, we are ready to begin, Chair.
Sergeant, we're ready to go, right? Did he say yes? Oh, yes. Good afternoon. I am Jim Gennaro, Chair of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Resiliency, and Waterfronts. Today, we're here to examine the Department of Environmental Protection's response and management to noise complaints. The committee will also hear a few pieces of legislation, including Intro. 160, sponsored by Councilmember Holden, in relation to the noise standard for commercial businesses; Intro. 1194, sponsored by me, in relation to citizen noise complaints; and a package of bills, sponsored by Councilmember Powers, that should be Majority Leader Powers, in relation to construction noise, noise inspection results, and creating a photo noise violation monitoring device program for motor vehicles. New York City must balance the vibrancy of being a world-class city with the needs of everyday New Yorkers. However, DEP cannot always respond quickly to every noise code violation in the city. To that end, sip of tea. To that end, the city's noise code allows New Yorkers to file their own noise complaints against violators of some, quote, "some," noise code provisions. These civilian enforcers must first serve a complaint upon DEP. Then, if DEP fails to act within 30 days, the enforcer may file the complaint directly on the alleged violator and the Environmental Control Board in the Office of Administrative Trials and Hearings, known as Oath. Civilian enforcers are awarded a percentage of any penalty assessed from a complaint they pursue, that is, if it's upheld, typically between $110 and $660 per complaint, staff informs me. Engaged New Yorkers play an important role in enforcement of our city's noise code. However, recent news reports have highlighted a small number of civilian enforcers who file large numbers of complaints under one particular noise code provision, often repeatedly against the same businesses, to collect the award money. The result is local businesses being unfairly burdened by overzealous enforcers who are more motivated by profit than quality of life. There, I said it. This hearing will examine DEPs and Oath's roles in enforcing the noise code to balance the needs of all New Yorkers. In addition, we'll hear several bills that will make civilian enforcement of the noise code less financially lucrative and more objective, make it easier for New Yorkers to request and obtain the results of certain noise inspections, and reduce the overall level of unnecessary noise in the city. These bills include Intro. 1194, which I sponsored, or I'm sponsoring, that would cap the compensation civilian enforcers can receive when their complaint prompts proceedings under subdivision B of Section 24-244 of the noise code at $5 for proceedings brought by DEP, and $10 for proceedings an enforcer brings themselves. This would reduce the financial incentive for, well, let me just kind of edit this sentence as I read it. This would reduce the financial incentive for individuals who file multiple harassing complaints against businesses for the purposes of collecting the award money will allow DEP inspectors to focus on legitimate noise complaints and on improving the quality of life for all New Yorkers. We will also hear Intro. 160, sponsored by Councilmember Holden, who would amend the definition for, quote, "unreasonable noise," close quote, as applies to commercial establishment to be sound that exceeds specified prohibited noise levels. Unreasonable noise would include impulsive sound above 15 decibels measured at any point within the property in question, or 15 feet or more from the source of the sound on the public right away. Just have a sidebar on that. 20 years ago, when the mayor did his revamp of the noise code, and it came before this committee, and I was chair at the time, and it was my understanding that we had put that all to rest, and that there was a big, little history. There was a big fight at the time about the Bloomberg administration's desire to have an unreasonable noise standard for business establishments, for people having backyard parties, for people doing loud noise in their apartments, or whatever. And I, and the council, the council at the time, the committee at the time, thought it was unfair for businesses to not have an objective standard that they had to meet, just like one drives a car, and the speed limit is 30, you know, the speed limit is 30. And so, we felt it was important to have an objective standard that business establishments could be apprised of, and they would have to stay within that standard. That would be measured by a, you know, a decibel meter. Because if the Bloomberg administration had had its way, and it was an unreasonable noise standard that applied to business establishments, any business would be subject to a violation for noise for anything, you know, depending upon the individual writing the summons. And so, how can a business reasonably prepare? How can they operate if they have no idea when they're going to be violated? And so, it'd be, you know, served with a violation. So, that was when we came up with the noise meter for establishments. That was going to be their standard. They'd be apprised of what the decibel standard is, and they would have to meet that. They would know it. They can get an engineer. They can look at it. They can measure it. And then, they'd be in compliance. And if someone caught them being out of compliance, as measured by a noise meter, they would get a violation. And the unreasonable noise standard, this is back 20 years ago, and we thought we put all this to rest, the unreasonable noise standard was still going to apply for things that were not establishments, for someone having a loud backyard party, someone playing loud noise in their apartment at, you know, 3:00 in the morning. So, there was certainly a road for an unreasonable noise standard. And so, but it seems, I'm not a lawyer, but it seems that there is still ambiguity as to what that, what we actually did 20 years ago, and I think the Holden bill speaks to that. And so, we'll hear more about that, but I just thought that history lesson was in order. We fought like anything to get the noise standard measured by a decibel meter. To be fair, there was bloodshed over that provision. But we prevailed, and now, it seems that, you know, unreasonable noise standard for businesses. I understand the difference between noise emanating from the operation of business, people pointing speakers out to say, you know, "Come and shop here, buy a necktie here." I think that's a little bit of a different story. But certainly, you know, so the plot thickened over the last 20 years to where we are now. And so, where was I? Where were we? 774? Is that where we are? Okay. We'll hear a package of bills sponsored by Councilmember Powers that includes, look at this package, look at this whole thing he's got here. Intro. 774, which would require DEP to measure the volume of certain types of construction noise from within dwelling units upon request of the owner, lessor, or occupant; Intro. 775, which would mandate that DEP publish the results of their noise inspection online within 24 hours after they have been completed; Intro. 776, which would require DEP and NYPD to give a copy of a noise report pursuant to a 311 noise complaint to anyone who requests the report and provides the 311 tracking number within 14 days of the request. And, you know, and the Majority Leader is going to speak on these bills in a minute. I just kind of want to set them up. Intro. 777, which would require any person engaging in a construction project to obtain an after-hours variance before removing construction debris before or after certain hours and on the weekend. And Intro. 778, he's the Majority Leader, it's known as that, all of his bills are in consecutive order, 774, 775, you've got to be the Majority Leader to pull that off. Intro. 778, which would establish a noise camera program to detect motor vehicles in violation of the noise code. Vehicles found to be in violation are subject to the civil penalty as prescribed by existing law. The bill would require DEP to report on the noise camera program annually. Finally, I would like to thank the really terrific committee staff who have done such great work over the years, particularly on this hearing. Committee Counselors Samara Swanson and Claire McLaughlin, Policy Analyst Ricky Chala and Andrew Boren, Financial Analyst Andrew Lane Lawless, and finally, my great Legislative Director, Nabi Core, for all of their hard work. Before I turn it over to members who have bills for statements, I want to recognize that we're joined by Councilmember Holden, who I made reference to, Councilmember Nurse, Councilmember Menon, Councilmember, Majority Leader Powers. We have Councilmember Hanks on Zoom, is that correct? And is Lincoln here on Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay, Lincoln, and Lincoln, and Lincoln Wrestler, who, when he asks questions, will no doubt go over time, but I always indulge him. And I think I got it. And with that, Bob, you're a member of the committee, and, but if you wouldn't mind, we do have the Majority Leader with us. If you would defer and have me call upon the Majority Leader to speak about his package of bills first, is that okay, Bob?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Holden is being most gracious, and now I recognize the Majority Leader to speak on his good bills.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thank you to Councilmember Holden, who I know has a bill that we're hearing here today. I also want to congratulate Lincoln on achieving Madonna and Chair status as one name for people in this world. But I really want to thank the Chair and the staff here for giving me the opportunity to hear these bills today and being great partners on a number of issues that we're working on together around environment and quality of life. We introduced a package a few months back we called the Stop Spreading the Noise Act. Yes, it's a bad pun, but you're going to have to deal with it, my friends. It's to help to reduce excessive noise across the five boroughs. This is directly from constituent calls that we get every single day. And whether you are in Manhattan or anywhere else in the city, I can tell you without question your neighbors and your constituents are dealing with noisy issues every single day. We all know New York is a city that never sleeps, but between noisy helicopters, constant construction, and loud cars, I think we all can agree it's time for some quiet. I've introduced these five bills to help tackle some of the most common and frequent issues that we hear in my office. First, introduction 778 establishes a noise camera program to help us detect noisy vehicles and issue violations to any drivers found to be violating city noise limits. This bill would require annual reporting on the locations of the cameras, the number of violations detected, and any revenue raised by the program. And I want to note that the DEP, as I understand it, is rolling out a program right now to evaluate this and to understand how it could work here in the city. We also know that construction is another major source of noise. Intro. 774 will allow New Yorkers who live near construction sites to request an inspection of sound levels within their home through DEP, and to cut down on construction-related noise overnight on weekends. Intro. 777 would require an after-hours variance for the removal of construction debris, two things that we've gotten calls about in my office. Introduction 775 and 776 will help our 311 noise complaint system to be more transparent and effective by ensuring the results of those noise inspections are published online within 24 hours and made available to anyone with a 311 tracking number. Like a lot of issues of 311, it's a fantastic system, but we often hear New Yorkers complain about what happened to that actual call I made, and we think that on this particular issue, they deserve a right to have the outcome of that call in their hands to understand better how that city and that system's working for them. And to be clear, noise is not only a nuisance, it's a public health issue. Department of Health has reported that one in six New Yorkers already experience ringing in their ears or hearing loss, and 20% are frequently disturbed by noise at home. Long-term exposure can not only lead to hearing loss or stress and sleep disruption, but also high blood pressure and heart disease. It's also, we're obviously coming off a period of time where many of New Yorkers are staying at home and working, or working increasingly at home, and we have seen citywide the amount of complaints go up, enforcement go down, or the ability to respond to those perhaps stay even, while we try to tackle many more complaints coming in. And certainly, for the New Yorkers who are experiencing a new way of life, they deserve an opportunity to have a greater opportunity for peace and quiet. I'm confident this package of legislation will help greatly to improve the New Yorkers' quality of life. I want again to thank Chair Gennaro for holding this hearing, the committee staff for their work. I want to thank you, my staff, for helping to put this package together. I look forward to hearing the testimony today and moving forward this package of legislation to make New York just a little bit quieter. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Majority Leader. It's my privilege to recognize my colleague and great member of this committee, Councilmember Bob Holden, to speak on his bill.
Thank you, Chair Gennaro. And just follow up on Majority Leader Keith Powers' comments. The noise problem in New York City has been forever. We all know this. And particularly if you live in a mixed-use area, commercial along with residential. And so, there's got to be a balance there. And so, the introduction of my bill, Intro. 160, is a big step in addressing a significant problem we face in New York City, of course, the noise. I'm not a big fan of noise, and some of my legislation in the past has shown that, and I know many others feel the same way. Noise pollution can really impact our daily lives and our quality of life. With my bill, we're looking to take action to deal with this issue seriously. We're setting clear noise standards that don't leave room for any compromise. Many times, it's very subjective. You get a police officer, and if you call it into 311, it takes, it tells you on 311, it'll take eight hours, many times, to address it, within eight hours. The problem we have, and my district is certainly one of them, we have a problem where the officer goes there and says, "Oh, it's not that noisy." And then, the homeowner calls and says, "Listen to this, councilman. Look how noisy this is. I have this for eight hours a day." So, we need some kind of standards. So, I'm hopeful that these measures will make our city a quieter and more comfortable place to live, again, particularly in mixed-use areas. So, I'm looking forward to hearing from both the administration and the public on this matter. I'm open to suggestions on the bill. If people feel that it's too strict, we could change it. We can modify it. So, your feedback and support are crucial as we work together to create a more peaceful and enjoyable urban environment in New York City. I want to thank the Chair again. But I also want to bring up a little history, if you don't mind, Chair Gennaro.
Please.
Mayor Bloomberg tried this.
Please do so.
Mayor Bloomberg had Operation Silent Night. Does anybody remember Operation Silent Night? One person in the room. And where'd it go? It went nowhere. Nothing really came of it. It's a noisier city. So, I thank the Chair for this, the series of bill, and the Majority Leader, because these are important bills to make, to improve our quality of life. Again, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And notwithstanding the fact that Silent Night didn't turn out the way a lot of people thought, when the mayor put forward his comprehensive overhaul of the noise code, which took, he put it forward, I think in 2003, by the time we got through with all the yelling and screaming, it was like 2005 when we actually got it done. So, it was, you know, it affected the karting industry, it affected building managers that had air circulation devices, it affected construction, karting. It was, you know, we, it was a comprehensive package that I thought did a good job. But, you know, not everything is a big hit. So, Silent Night wasn't a big hit, but to the mayor's credit, he really tried to take noise, you know, seriously. We got a lot done, but we're back. And with that, I think we're ready to call the first panel, the Office of Administrative Hearing and Tribunals. I'd ask the committee counsel to swear in the witnesses, and I'll just, as a matter of, you know, just a statement, I want to thank DEP for, you know, kind of working with us to structure the hearing this way ordinarily. This is what we call the administration, this hearing ordinarily would be DEP, would be the first entity to testify. But as always, we work well with DEP, we work well with the administration, and I worked well with Oath before. I was the one that gave you folks the ECB. I don't know if you enjoy that or not, but it used to be in DEP, and we took it out of DEP and gave it to you, and I hope that worked out for you. And so, with that said, let me make sure I have my copy of your testimony in front of me. And the witnesses are sworn, right? Have they been sworn, or just called forward? Have they been sworn yet?
Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth today?
Thank you very much. I have your statement. You may proceed with your testimony.
Thank you, Councilmember, Chair Gennaro. Thank you. Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is John Castelli, and I am the Deputy Commissioner for Legislative Affairs at the New York City Office of Administrative Trials and Hearings. I would like to start by thanking Chair Gennaro and the members of the committee here today taking the time that you're, I know you have extensive responsibilities, and it's appreciated. I'm joined by my colleague, Amy Slifka, who is the Deputy Commissioner of our Hearings Division. By way of background, Oath is New York City's central independent administrative law tribunal, and our mission is to ensure that everyone who appears before us receives a fair opportunity to be heard and a timely resolution of their case. We are a high-volume court, and in fiscal 2023 alone, in our hearings division, we processed almost 765,000 summonses and held over 238,000 hearings and issued close to 2,000 appeals decisions. We also closed after trial or by settlement conference approximately 4,200 cases at our trials division. In each of these cases, we take great care to ensure that every party who appears before us is treated impartially and is accorded due process. In order to fulfill our mission, ensure impartiality, and protect due process, Oath must remain independent from this many city agencies that appear before us. New Yorkers, including individuals, homeowners, and small businesses, need to know that when they come before Oath, they are coming to a place that is unaffiliated with the agency that issued them a summons or notice of violation, and that they will be given a fair hearing. I have had the opportunity to do outreach events in a number of council districts, including some of your own, and if I haven't done it with you yet, believe me, I'm going to be there at some point, and looking forward to it. And through that work, I've come to learn that your constituents rely on Oath being independent, and for these reasons, we take our independence very seriously. One way that Oath maintains its independence is by not getting involved in enforcement matters. Oath does not opine on potential enforcement legislation, enforcement policy, or enforcement penalties. Those decisions are for the policymakers. We are the tribunal. Once a law is passed, we apply that law to the facts of each case brought before us. Consistent with this, Oath takes no position on the package of proposed legislation that is under consideration at today's hearing. We are here today because we understand that the committee has questions about Oath's processes and data, and we are happy to assist the committee in understanding how Oath works, and we will do our best to respond to your questions. Thank you, Chair Gennaro.
Thank you very much for appearing here today. We appreciate all that Oath does. And, oh, we're also joined by Councilmember Gutierrez. She has joined us. We're grateful to have her. And you came out to my district recently, and we have to coordinate that, yeah.
Yes, Chair, we had a tremendously successful event out in your Kew Gardens branch library, and we're looking forward to coming out again.
Yeah, there was a little disconnect with my office, but, yeah, but we certainly appreciate, you know, getting out to, you know, getting out to Queens, particularly my district. Okay, I have some prepared questions, but I, just help me out here a little bit. So, on August 17th, there was a resolution put forward by Oath regarding the exercise of authority to remit a civil penalty in code Section 24-244B matters. This has become a big deal. And so, if you could just, for those that are not familiar, because this is, seems like kind of an extraordinary thing for, because for Oath to put forward, because it wasn't in relation to one specific appeal or whatever, it was just Oath putting this out, and if you could just walk us through the reason why Oath felt compelled to put out this resolution? It's a real resolution, with whereas clauses and a resolve clause and all the trimmings. You know, what compelled Oath to do that? And for the laypeople here, what are you trying to get across to folks?
Mr. Chair, the decisions made by the Environmental Control Board are something I can't comment to as a representative of the Administrative Law Tribunal. Those decisions are, they speak for themselves, just like the decisions that are made by, quasi-judicial decisions that are made by our hearing officers and our ALJs, so I can't speak to that decision.
All right. I'm officially 0-for-1 now. Let's see if I can get my batting average up. Lincoln's, one of his job is to chuckle at things that I say, if nothing else. I'm just, you're supposed to do it all the time. Okay, thank you. Now, in light of what you said, let me ask questions that would be appropriate for Oath according to how you just couched that. This could be, I just want to get this on the record, you'll probably have to get back to me with this. What is the total monetary value of the civil penalties that Oath has sustained for citizen-initiated summonses alleging a violation of Section 24-244B?
That I'd have to get back to you on.
Yeah. So, again, this is things that we want, and so, we appreciate that. And what percentage, this, you may have some sense of this, you may not, or you may want to get back with a precise number. What percentage of citizen-initiated summonses alleging a violation of Section 24-244B have been defaulted on?
The percentage is 59%.
So, 59% default, okay. All right. Now, the citizen enforcers have been using Section 24-244B to, which I believe is really meant for those that have speakers facing out from an establishment, trying to generate business. And are you in a position to tell us whether or not that section of the code is being applied correctly when it comes to businesses that are, not have outward-facing speakers, but they have ambient noise within the establishment that spills out into the street? That is, my understanding was supposed to be like a decibel noise measure standard and not subject to the unreasonable noise standard.
Mr. Chair, we wouldn't be able to comment on whether or not the enforcement, this is more of an enforcement-type question. We can comment on the processes where we have a citizen prosecuted summons filed with Oath, and we can tell you what happens once that summons is filed. And I do want to stress that, I have tremendous respect for this And I do want to stress that I have tremendous respect for this committee and the council, and I don't like to tell you, hey, I can't.
No, no, it's fine.
So I just want you to be aware of that.
No, don't worry about it. We're, we feel you. We get it.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know. But I will, for the sake of the public, you know, indicate, just to put on the record, that this, you know, August 17th, this August 17th resolution talks a lot about 24244B. And what it really gets at is that, I'll just read the resolve court, that the board exercises, meaning the Environmental Control Board, exercises the authority granted under 2425 Section B, well, which is, that's the whole, you know, civilian enforcement thing, to remit in whole the civil penalty in all matters wherein the summons is charged as a violation of 24-244B. Upon finding at the hearing that the respondent is no longer in violation accordingly, upon a hearing officer so finding, a zero penalty shall be imposed. And I just want to let that sink in a little bit. So this is from the board, saying that if someone brings something forward under 24244, 24-244B, if the respondent is no longer in violation, and that can be substantiated, a zero penalty shall be imposed. Seems to me, this is my own editorializing, I'll own it, that Oath has kind of had it with these violations, and they're, this is their own way, my interpretation, you know, that, you know, this is their way of, like, putting forward that the, what's been going on since this fairly recent phenomenon of the, you know, citizen enforcers going out and using 24244B, you know, in a way that differs from what it was intended. You know, to me, this is Oath doing kind of all it can to indicate that as long as the condition is now corrected, no penalty will be imposed. And so I know that Oath is kind of in a little box here and has limited ability to opine on this and that. But, you know, to me, this was a striking resolution, I think kind of an act of courage on the, on the part of Oath, and I salute you for that. That's not a question, it's a statement. And, but getting back to that 59% number, so someone gets a violation under 24244B, and maybe the section, maybe that, maybe that section of the code is being applied in the right way, maybe it's being applied in the, in the wrong way, but if they default, they lose judgment against them, they have to pay, the citizen enforcers, you know, get their bounty or whatever you want to call it, and then the businesses have to pay. So this is a 59% default rate. And so that, I think, is, are there, just to turn this into a question, I mean, is it, is it, is it ordinary for a lot of different violations for there to be like this level of default? Or is 24-244B, you know, unique in its, you know, percentage of defaults?
I couldn't answer that question regarding.
It was a good question, though, I think.
It says, I mean, as the Administrative Law Tribunal, our, our role is to ensure that the hearings happen. I can't speak to or can't, I can't opine on why someone defaults, fails to answer a summons, and I can't.
Well, I tell you what, why don't we have someone from Oath, if you wouldn't mind, you know, put some numbers together on default rates? If that's, obviously, it's, it's public information. I'm just, I just want to kind of zero in on that 59% default number.
I can, I can look into that, and we'll get back to you.
Okay, sure. And regarding the Oath Appeals Unit, if you, if you, if you're able, can you describe the role of the Oath Appeals Unit? And are the decisions of the Appeals Unit binding on all hearing officers?
The decisions by the, depending on, obviously, there could be factual distinctions between cases, but where the, where the facts are basically the same, a decision is made where it, when it's, those facts are applied to the law in question. If the appeals decision is made based on those facts, and there are similar cases, those, those similar cases could follow that, that, that decision. Again, but each case is taken on its own.
Right.
So it, there are so many nuances involved, as you know.
Yeah.
So regarding the, yes, and my answer is, it depends, basically.
Right. But, so the, when something is appealed and, you know, the, and, and the, and the Appeals Unit comes forward with a decision that is, is, that's what lawyers might call precedent or something. Is that, is that a proper use of that term, counsel? But it is, so it, so these appeals would be disseminated to the hearing officers, and they'd be aware of various appeals, that when they're in the midst of adjudicating, you know, whatever they're adjudicating, they would, it would be, it would be fair to say that that would be guidance for them, right?
Pursuant to the charter requirement, yes.
Right, okay. And has Oath, has Oath seen an increase in citizen-initiated summonses under 24261 alleging a violation of Section 24244B in the last year? Do you have any sense of that?
I can't. I couldn't tell you. I have to get back to you on that.
All right. There's so many questions here, I want to be, and ordinarily, when I, I normally bring in my other members fairly early to ask questions, because I like to get them involved and engage them, being a little bit of a ball hog here. And it's not my way to do this, but this is kind of a special case. Well, I kind of get my head together for my next question. We have Councilmember Nurse, who has asked for the opportunity to ask questions. I recognize Councilmember Nurse.
Chair, I think my question is going to be for DEP.
Oh, no, these would just be for Oath, okay. And so.
Yeah, mine will be for later.
What's that?
I have a question for later.
Okay, fine, sure.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, so, yeah, when DEP is on, we'll do that.
Councilmember, ask questions.
Okay. I recognize Councilmember Holden for questions.
Thank you, Chair. Just a few questions on the types of complaints and some of the defense that we hear from, let's say, some establishments. I'm more interested in hearing from commercial establishments, like, do some of these commercial establishments say, or do most of the defense would say, I didn't know about the law, or I didn't know the standards of the law?
I mean, in that scenario, the answer would be yes.
That would be the majority of the time.
I couldn't tell you.
They didn't know they were violating the law.
Again.
It's essentially noise complaints. I would, I would think that would be probably the defense.
That could be a defense, yeah.
And, and so when you say that there was a default, that, that means they didn't answer the complaint?
They failed to answer the summons.
They failed?
Which means, yes. I'm sorry, Councilmember.
And then, so tell us what happens.
So if they fail to answer a summons, what happens is, Oath will notify the respondent, business establishment, and let them, immediately notify them and let them know that you're, you've missed your hearing, please contact us ASAP regarding this. And they get 75 days from the date of the hearing that they missed, where they can file a motion to vacate that default. So that's 75 days without any questions asked, they will be given, once they file that motion to vacate. They could do it online, they could do it in writing, they will be granted a new hearing date.
So you give, automatically give them a second chance?
Second chance, yes, yes.
And then what happens after that? They don't?
Well, if they don't, then from between, if it's more than 75 days and less than one year, they need a reasonable excuse to, for, to get a motion to vacate that default. They have to provide a reasonable excuse. And if it's more than a year, they are going to need a extraordinary circumstance to succeed in getting that motion to vacate.
All right. At one point, at what point do you generate a summons?
Well, we don't generate.
You don't generate, but the agency will.
The summons is filed with us by the enforcement agency. That's when it comes into our universe, that's when it exists in our world. So it depends when the agencies file it with us.
So it's up to them if they file.
Yes, and they set the hearing dates.
All right. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Holden. Now, most times, the entities that bring summonses forward to Oath would be agencies, you know.
Yes.
And are there any special accommodations or changes to Oath's, to Oath's practices that must be made for citizen-initiated summonses as opposed to when the petitioner is an agency? How does that, how does that work?
Well, when, and obviously, when, when the agency files a summons with Oath, then the, it comes into, again, as I said, we then, the adjudicatory process begins, and then there is a hearing, and until we get to that hearing, there are no ex parte communications between Oath and any of the parties. The only time we have any communications is on the record at the hearing. Now, when it's, when a citizen prosecuted summons is filed with Oath, then it's treated, the hearing date is set similarly to the, similarly to the, what the, the enforcement agency sets the hearing date, and also the, the citizen complainant, citizen prosecutor who, who prosecutes the case. They have to appear at the hearing. Now, sometimes the enforcement agency is not, does not appear, they don't always appear at the hearing, they usually do, but in the case of the citizen.
Okay, just, just hold on that point again. And so, so you got a citizen-initiated adjudication that's going on.
Right.
So the entities that would be there would be the adjudicatory entity, which is you folks?
Yes.
And then you have the person making the complaint?
Yes.
And the person that the complaint is being made against?
Yes.
And then you would have the agency that's involved?
No, no. What I'm talking about is where the, where it's a citizen prosecuted summons, where that's filed with Oath, it's the citizen complainant who has to appear at the hearing to prosecute the case against the responding, and the respondent before the Oath hearing officer.
Right. And let's just say this citizen enforcer was, makes an allegation of violation, and Oath makes a determination that the section of the code cited by the complainant is not the right section of the code, or that section of the code doesn't apply to the complaint that they're bringing forward. What happens then?
I'm going to defer to Deputy Commissioner Amy Slifka, who's the head of our hearings division. You could give a better answer than me.
Sure.
So basically, from what I'm.
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Amy Slifka, Deputy Commissioner of Adjudications at Oath. So basically, from what I'm hearing you're saying is, if a summons is issued, and for example, they don't, the facts don't make out the charge for the section of law, if both parties are present, then the hearing officer would hear the case, petition would present their case, in this case, the citizen complainant, the respondent would present their case, and the hearing officer would decide the, make a decision on the case. If the facts don't make out a case for the section of law charged, then obviously, it's not making a prima facie case, and it would more than likely be dismissed. But this is not done ex parte, this is not done by the hearing officer without both sides being in, given an opportunity to present their side of the case.
Right. But the, but the, and the individual who'd be, who'd be doing the, who would actually be doing the, doing the adjudication would be a hearing officer and ALJ or?
It's a judicial hearing officer, it's a hearing officer.
Right. And so that person is obliged to make sure that the code is, that the section is being, is being applied correctly?
Correct.
Okay, and that, and that's that, right?
And that's that.
Okay, all right. I recognize Councilmember Nurse, who has a question for Oath.
Just one question. I'm just trying to understand what, what data you can share. I had a question about how many of the complaints that have been initiated by the two people who I'm reading make about 90% of the noise complaints? How many of those are successful?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. First thing, I just want to clarify from, so I answer the best I can to your question, is when we, at Oath, we, we, we look at citizen prosecuted summonses and not, they're not citizen complaints. So they're filed with us, the citizen prosecuted summonses, that's when, so in terms of.
So of those that are, of those that are filed with you?
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you what the, what the, what the numbers are. I could not tell you. I can check.
What kind of data are you able to provide today? I mean, related to this hearing? I'm just kind of struggling to understand what we're, what we're getting here.
Sorry.
I'm asking, what kind of data are you able to provide today around this hearing topic?
Well, the, the data that I provided, that was provided from the questions.
The 59% one, that's, that's the only data point I heard, but I might, I might have misheard.
I can't, I mean, the, the questions that were previously provided to us, we had given information regarding the summonses that were issued by the enforcement HCDP and by the citizen prosecuted, citizen complainants who prosecute summonses with us.
Okay. So even if you've said it or not, just to restate it, because I'm trying to keep on top of what's being said across here.
And, and Councilmember, please, it's, we want to make sure we.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to understand the scale.
As the Administrative Law Tribunal, it's, it's our job to make sure that you know, the more you know, the better it is for your constituents, better it is for all of us, and we can make sure that people get fair and impartial hearings.
I believe you, I believe you 100%.
I sound like a broken record when I say it, because that's all I say, and people get annoyed, because all they hear about from, from us is fair and impartial hearings and due process, because that's what we focus on.
It's just been hard for me to follow exactly the numbers in this conversation. So I'm trying to get a sense of how many cases that are complaints that move into your jurisdiction, where you are taking action around noise complaints have been successful.
Well, the, if you.
How many of those cases are you getting a year? Because you testified a lot of numbers, and it's in terms of all of the cases, but I don't know if that was.
If, if, if I'm, if I'm correctly interpreting the question, and forgive me. If, if, if I'm, if I'm correctly interpreting the question, and forgive me if I'm not, please, what we have, the numbers that were provided have the cases that are dismissed and the percentage. If you look at citizen-issued summonses by percentage for noise, you'll see the percentage of summonses that are dismissed. That would be on page three, if we have the same type of.
I think maybe mine has missing page. I have a paragraph where you have, you know, 765,000 summonses, 2,000 appeals. I just don't know if that's just, that's like your whole case work.
We provided numbers, and I have numbers. We provided answers to questions that counsel, to the committee.
Got it. I will follow up and get those then, because this was not, I was like, I'm not understanding.
Please feel free to, we're always available. You can, feel free, I'm going to, we'll give you our card, I'll give you my card after, when we're done here, so you have access. And please contact us anytime.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nurse. Here's just one sort of final question, getting back to the resolution. I'm kind of still stuck on that, and counsel, the committee thinks it's a good idea to get this question in full on the record. Again, going back to the resolution. On August 17, the ECB adopted a resolution to exercise the authority, to exercise the authority, the Noise Code grants them, ECB, to remit a civil penalty upon a finding at a hearing that the respondent is no longer in violation of Section 24-244B, which concerns the use of a noise reproduction device by a commercial enterprise for advertising purposes. What factors will the ECB rely on to make a determination in each matter that there is no longer a violation?
Again, Chair, I can't speak to, I cannot opine on the decision, a quasi-judicial decision that the board made.
Okay. But I, I, I think the resolution, you know, does kind of speak for itself somewhat on that. And does anybody have any more questions for, for Oath? No? Okay. With that, I'd like to thank you both for coming before us. Do you have another statement you want to make?
Just want to thank you, Chair Gennaro. Oath wouldn't be where it is today without the work that you did 20 years ago. You've helped us, you've expanded and provided accessibility, greater access to justice for people throughout our city for the work that you've done.
Well, I was getting a lot of complaints back in the day from vendors, from this, from that. And also, you know, we've got, we've got, you know, DEP, who is, you know, an entity within DEP is hearing like fire violations and noise violations and all kinds of different, and sanitation violations. And, you know, the ECB of that era didn't have like such a great reputation. I thought it was a good idea to, you know, to put it into Oath where, you know, you know, Oath has got some game. So I thought that would be a better place. There would be more, there would just be better justice meted out, and people would go to ECB, then they'd have to come back another day. And, you know, I used to get a lot of complaints. And I was, again, Chair of the committee at that time, and then I, you know, overseeing DEP, and I'm like, we should, we should move this to Oath. So I'm glad for all the work that you've done, and vendors and other people that used to get jammed up at, you know, ECB, let's just say, I don't get complaints anymore. And so that is a testament to your good, you know, stewardship of the, of the ECB. And, you know, adjudicating all this stuff is not really what DEP is all about. That's what you're about. So that's where that came from. So thank you for coming before us. And now we have the face of Oath at our committee. And this is your first time before this committee, so pick up your door prize before, as you're, as, you know, we don't really have door prizes here.
Thank, thank you, Chair, and thank you, members of the committee. Thanks so much.
Lincoln is just going like this.
I'm going to give you my card, Councilmember.
Okay. Thank you very much. We want to call DEP forward. I'd ask DEP to get themselves situated and sworn. I'll be back in two minutes to hear their statement.
I'm going to go get a cup of tea. I'll be right back.
Okay, it's always a pleasure to have DEP with us. And, you know, folks, I go back with a long way. Deputy Commissioner Licata, Mr. Page, well, you have your, I just want to call everybody by the right title, but hello, hello. Great to have you here. I look forward to hearing your good testimony. Everyone's all duly sworn and everything? Okay, all right. With that, we'd be, all of them sworn in? Okay.
No.
Counsel could swear in the witnesses?
Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do.
Thank you very much. Again, a pleasure. Please, please commence with your good testimony.
Good afternoon, Chairman Gennaro, and members of the Environmental Protection Committee on, we would like to begin just by introducing my colleagues. As you noted, this is Mark Page. He's the Executive Director of the Bureau of Environmental Compliance. And sitting to his left is Alyssa Preston. And yes, I knew you would recognize that name.
Have you been in DEP all these years? Oh, oh, it's been a long time. So good to see you. So good to see you.
She's the Director of Air Noise Policy and Enforcement. So I am Angela Licata, and I'm Deputy Commissioner for the Department of Environmental Protection. And I thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'd like to begin with a brief overview of DEP's noise enforcement work, including the citizen complaint program, and then we'll speak to each of the bills being considered today. To begin, DEP and my colleagues were very proud of the work that we have done to improve the quality of life for all New Yorkers by enforcing the city's noise code. The code does ensure that the city that never sleeps remains vibrant and active while meeting the needs of those who live in, work in, and visit the city by reducing noise pollution and protecting public health. DEP and the New York City Police Department share responsibility for enforcing the noise code. DEP's responsibilities focus on commercial music, construction noise, noise from buildings' heating and ventilation equipment. And DEP's noise inspectors proactively approve and inspect noise mitigation plans and respond to approximately 50,000 noise complaints each year. The noise code has been updated twice in recent years. First, as Chairman Gennaro explained, was in 2005. And then we had some updates and improvements that were made with Local Law 53 of 2018. And we are very grateful for the leadership and the support of the New York City Council, and especially of the now Chair and then Chair Gennaro's for making these improvements. We are forever looking to continue to make these improvements, so we don't want to rest on our laurels, but we do want to appreciate how far that we've come since the 1970s.
Although I will indicate, just to indicate, that Local Law 53 of 2018 was when I wasn't here. So anyone's got a problem with that law, that ain't me, you know? And so, thank you very mu, so, but, you know, it's always, it's, it's great to be partners with DEP. We've done a lot of great things together over the years, the council and DEP. Please continue. Forgive my interruption.
These critical updates standardized commercial music regulations, required these noise mitigation measures for construction activities, created a section that prohibits excessive noise from motor vehicles. Since the 2018 changes, DEP has been required to respond to after-hours noise complaints in specific timeframes, and requires that all noise mitigation plans be filed electronically and be available for public inspection. These changes have significantly strengthened DEP's enforcement. In addition to the proactive enforcement, DEP inspectors focus in areas of known complaints, and they also have very specific training and can use their discretion to determine if there is a violation or not. If an inspector determines a complaint is justified under the noise code, the inspector informs the business of the alleged violation and what can be done to correct it. And that is generally before a violation is issued. Depending on the severity of the alleged violation and whether or not it is purposely and egregiously performed, these are the levels of discretion that our inspectors are trained to provide. And our goal, again, I need to be really clear, is to bring businesses into compliance with the noise code and to reduce noise pollution for the benefit of the public and its public health. The goal is not to be punitive. The goal is not to make profits, although, as we stated, we do not hesitate to issue summonses to bad actors.
Angela, I'm going to confess that I've lost my place.
We're going to start with a paragraph, "Of course, DEP's inspectors will never be able to address all of the city's noise issues as they are happening."
Is this page two?
Mm-hmm.
We're, we're.
"Of course, DEP's inspectors will never be able to address all of the city's noise issues as they are happening."
I'm, Keith, you got this? Now, throw up the map. Did I think put together wrong?
Don't use that one, sir. I think that one would have been missing a page.
Oh, my testimony is missing a page?
Yes.
I'm vindicated. We should have music in the background as we kind of figure this out.
Beginning with the paragraph, "Of course."
I don't have anything in front of me now. I have, I will soon.
The testimony that was given to us, I think, was missing some pages. So, yeah, at least on some of the legislation, it was missing some of the bills.
Yes. There was a missing page. Now I have the page. It's a partial paragraph, and the first whole paragraph begins, "Of course, DEP's inspectors," right?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry about, sorry for the hubbub.
Okay. So it says, "Of course, DEP's inspectors will never be able to address all of the city's noise issues as they are happening. We simply cannot be everywhere all the time. This is why citizen enforcement can be useful complement to DEP's work. Local laws allow us to, allows anyone to provide evidence of potential violations of certain sections of the noise code to DEP. DEP or the reporter can then bring this evidence to the Office of Administrative Trials and Hearings for a hearing to determine whether a violation has taken place. We believe citizen enforcement is valuable, but it needs to be fair. Citizen enforcement of the noise code should pursue the same goal as DEP-led enforcement, encouraging compliance and reducing noise pollution. Unfortunately, that has not been the case recently."
You know what? If I could just jump in, again, sometimes if I don't do it now, and I'll, please pardon the back and forth. And so with regard to the citizen enforcement, you talked about, here's how it works. Local law allows anyone to provide evidence, potential violations. And so DEP or the reporter can then bring this evidence to Oath for a hearing, but don't they have to bring it to DEP first?
They come to DEP first. DEP has 30 days to either seek enforcement on its own in conjunction with the citizen, or.
Somebody comes to DEP, and they, they, they have a complaint. And so DEP can send their own enforcement people out there to monitor it, do what needs to be done, assess it, issue violations or whatever. So DEP gets that. And, and failing that, like what happens? So DEP decides for whatever reason. So if somebody brings a complaint, and DEP wouldn't go out there if it's just like something that, that already happened, and somebody comes forward and they have evidence or whatever, right? Then DEP like takes a look at that. And then DEP can use that evidence to issue its own violation. Can it not?
Yes, DEP can issue its own violation if it witnesses. It can go out there, as you stated, and look.
No, but, but can they do it based on?
The citizens.
Based on the citizen's information that's been brought forward? It could be a videotape, it could be an audiotape, it could be a decibel level reading, it could be whatever the heck it is, right?
Yes.
And so based on that, DEP can issue a violation, and then DEP is the complainant, and then it has to go and deal with Oath.
Yes, DEP would cosponsor that complaint. The citizen would get a portion of that penalty if the penalty is upheld at Oath. So they would receive some of that penalty money.
Right. Okay. And, all right, this is, I don't want to get too much into the question, but just, just know that coming out of this, Alyssa, there's going to be a question about this section, whatever, whatever it is, you know, whether or not Section 24-244B, people using that section for sound reproduction devices, which I believe, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is really meant for people that are using that for advertising purposes. But yet, these violations are being brought to DEP for ambient noise that is spilling out into the street, therefore not. So I just think that's, you know, the wrong section of, of, of the code, so just get ready for a question on that.
Mm-hmm.
And why DEP is even entertaining these and not just, and not just indicating like, you got the wrong section of the code, go home. And so, so that, that question is coming, okay? Make sure I do that. Okay, right. Please continue. I'll try to limit my jumping in.
Unfortunately, that has not been the case recently. Citizen noise enforcement has been a significant problem for many businesses this year, with businesses receiving multiple violations by. businesses receiving multiple violations by citizen enforcers all at once without a warning and racking up thousands of dollars in fines for minor infractions. We do not think this has been fair, and we thank the Chair for his attention to this real issue and to protecting the livelihood of businesses unfairly targeted by a select few citizen enforcers. Citizen enforcement is supposed to be a tool to reduce genuine noise pollution in circumstances where DEP inspectors cannot respond in real time. The program is also used for our vehicle idling program, a program that has been largely successful and that is playing an important role in improving air quality in the city and helping communities protect themselves from pollution. The idling program allows citizens to film a vehicle idling and submit the video with a description of the incident through the DEP website. DEP inspectors then review the evidence and issue a summons if warranted. If the vehicle owner is found in violation at the subsequent oath hearing, the citizen who submitted this evidence is entitled to receive 25% of the collected fine. If DEP does not issue a summons and the citizen decides to self-pursue the case with oath, then the citizen is entitled to receive 50% of the collected fine. Some citizens have realized the money-making potential of the idling enforcement program and begun to patrol neighborhoods looking for idling vehicles. Overall, the diligence of idling enforcement has been a positive thing for communities and our air quality. However, there are some overzealous opportunistic citizen idling enforcers who have abused the program. Some participants have been egregiously aggressive towards our staff, and some have tried to defraud the system by doing things like filing fake videos or resubmitting the same video repeatedly. Our staff has thwarted their attempts to submit falsified evidence, and they are also successful, in fact, that a few participants started looking for new ways to profit from the citizen enforcement programs. About a year ago, these few participants realized they could file noise complaints against businesses who were playing music outdoors. Because noise videos do not have time minimums, they could make money more easily. A small number of people abused this enforcement option and have been targeting harassing several businesses. In fact, about 90% of the approximately 6,000 noise complaints filed in 2023 by citizens were filed by only two people. As you can see on the map that we provided in the testimony, these citizens have been targeting specific areas of Queens and Manhattan. They are mostly commercial areas where they can walk down the street and record sound from multiple businesses in just a few minutes. Locations of citizen enforcement of Section 24-244B, which relates to businesses playing music outside for commercial purposes.
Well, I just lost my place. So you have, as you can see from this map, they can do sound from multiple businesses in a few minutes. Then you have the map, and then what happened after that? They just get something?
Locations of citizen enforcement of Section 24-244B, you should see, which relates to businesses playing music outside for commercial purposes.
I don't have that on mine. Do you have that? Oh, okay, that's the fine print on top of the graphic. I'm sorry. Okay.
The enforcement being done through citizen enforcement is hurting businesses and is not helping communities. Citizen enforcement is happening in areas where we do not receive 311 noise complaints. No one is complaining about noise from Times Square in the middle of the day, but more than 1,000 citizen complaint reports have been focused there. The participants are not using enforcement to achieve compliance and reduce noise pollution. They are using it for personal profit. And now we're turning to the legislation. Overall, the legislation being considered today complements DEP's work, and we generally support these bills. We do want to recommend a few specific changes to the introduced legislation, and would like to postpone consideration of Intro 1194. Intro 1194...
Postpone consideration? This is the hearing.
Not postpone the hearing.
No, I'm saying that, but this is the...
Well, I'm going to testify about our concerns on that right now, so...
Oh, fine, 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 fine. Okay.
Completely, yeah.
Yeah, I thought you meant like you didn't want to address it at all. Okay, and I'm saying this is the hearing. You have to.
Yeah. So currently, if a business pays a fine from a noise summons by a citizen enforcer, the citizen enforcer can receive as much as $660. Subsequent violations have heavier fines than the first one, so enforcers are incentivized to stack a series of complaints against one business and deliver many at once. Before a business has received one summons, they already have racked up several more. Intro 1194, we reduce the payout collected by citizen noise enforcers from a percentage of that penalty to a flat rate of $5 or $10. This reduction would make it harder for bad actors to use these violations as a source of significant income. This reduced incentive could reduce the volume of summonses that businesses receive, addressing one of the challenges small businesses are facing. We share the goal of reducing this undue burden on small business, but we would like to work with the Council to enact broader reforms to the citizen complaint program. DEP has been working with other agencies, including Small Business Services, on comprehensive reforms to improve the citizen enforcement program. These reforms will make the program a more effective tool, combat noise pollution, and protect businesses from program abuse. Using penalty reduction to achieve the volume of complaints that a business receives only resolves one of the challenges that businesses are facing. Even if this bill were enacted as it is currently drafted, businesses could still receive many summons and many summonses long after the alleged violation date. So we would like to take the time to defend, oh, I'm sorry, summonses at once, having to take the time to defend themselves at an adjudication hearing and having to pay a significant fine. In addition to these changes to protect businesses, we want to reform the program to protect city staff from repeated harassment and abuse that they have experienced. As I alluded to earlier, a small number of citizen enforcers have harassed staff at multiple agencies and the companies they provide evidence against. Some specific issues we have dealt with included several instances of aggressive citizen complaints attempting to access secure government office spaces looking for specific individuals, including an instance of a complainant attempting to assault a staff member. Aggressive verbal harassment targeted at specific employees, and instances, the same piece of evidence being submitted with different allegations with the intent to generate multiple summons based on intentionally fraudulent evidence. I understand that some of your colleagues' staffs have received similar aggressive communications. If any Councilmember has further questions regarding abusive behavior, please feel free to reach out to the administration for more details. We welcome continuing this conversation. The administration, therefore, wants to enact holistic reform legislation that would establish a fixed monetary payment for citizen enforcers, as this bill does, but would also ensure the businesses receive a summons in a timely manner and do not receive too many at once, limit citizen noise enforcement to overnight hours when these noise violations have a greater negative impact, create a cure mechanism so that businesses can work with DEP to resolve an issue, avoiding the need to appear at a hearing and eliminating any potential fine, authorizing DEP to establish clear rules for evidence required with reports, authorize the city to disqualify citizens from participating in the program if they are found to submit fraudulent evidence or exhibit abusive behavior. Further, we would like to update the type of violations that can be reported by citizens. Noise complaints through 311 about ice cream trucks playing music is one of the top five 311 noise complaint categories. Ice cream trucks are not supposed to play music continuously while they are parked. DEP inspectors cannot regularly respond to these calls, so we want to expand citizen enforcement to include this noise. Intro 160 would amend the noise code relating to interior noise at commercial establishments so that noise that is generated inside but cannot be heard from the sidewalk is no longer treated the same as noise that is generated outside. This would include removing interior noise from citizen enforcement eligibility. We think this is a clear delineation to the citizen enforcement program, and it makes sense and makes the code more understandable for businesses, so we support this bill. Intro...
Okay, so I just want to jump in for a second. And so, you know what? Let me just kind of save that. Let me just mark that and save that for a question. And that's an alarm going off saying they have to take some eye medication. So as soon as you finish your statement, I'm going to do that. It's going to go off again in a minute to remind me, but, yeah, it's a thing. Okay. Again, forgive the interruption. Please continue. Intro 774.
Intro 774 would require DEP to measure construction-related sound levels inside homes whenever asked to. DEP follows this practice currently, so we support this requirement and is already codified in 24-223D for after-hours work. DEP recommends amending Sections 228 and 229 to allow for readings to be taken from a dwelling during the day with limits warranting a summons set to an increment of 10 decibels above the ambient during the day instead of a limit of 85 decibels at the A-weighted scale and retain the 7 dBA standard or decibels at the A-weighted scale for after-hours work. Intro 775 would require DEP to post the results of all noise inspections online within 24 hours of the inspection being completed. We request that this bill be amended to extend the time window. Each inspection report must be reviewed and approved by a supervisor, and there are extra considerations when we expect a summons to be issued. We prefer to delay posting information to ensure that the information is accurate. So we would like to work with the sponsor to determine a more workable timeline. Intro 776 would require DEP to provide any noise inspection report that was generated in response to a 311 call to be provided to anyone who requests the report and has the 311 tracking number. Currently, FOIL requests are required to obtain these reports. We support the goal of this bill, but would like to discuss it in more detail with the sponsor and our colleagues at the Police Department. Intro 777 would add debris removal to the definition of construction work that requires a variance for after-hours noise generation. DEP currently considers debris removal in noise permit requirements as removal of material as part of the construction process. DEP does include, supports the inclusion of debris removal in the definition of construction work. Intro 778 would require DEP to establish a noise camera program for motor vehicles and lays out the specifications for how a program should work and how oath should process violations. DEP began piloting a vehicle noise camera program in 2021. After a successful pilot period, we launched the program officially in March of 2022. The program has led to more than 300 violations being issued. The use of the cameras is an effective and efficient complement to boots-on-the-ground or field patrol enforcement efforts. We continue to learn and evolve the program, including adopting new technologies and increasing the number of camera locations. If a noise program is required by local law, we support many of the proposed requirements, including the reporting and certification requirements. However, we would like it to complement the program that we have developed over the last few years and be flexible enough to allow the program to evolve as new technologies emerge. We're happy to work with the sponsor on this legislation as well. Thank you for consideration of these matters. We look forward to engaging in thoughtful discussion with the Chair and bill sponsors to work towards our shared goal of reducing noise pollution to protect the health of all New Yorkers, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Deputy Commissioner LaCata. Yeah, so we've got like a bunch of bills by the Majority Leader, and then Bob Holden and I are fighting the war on civilian enforcement. And so, I'm going to yield to the Majority Leader. He has questions on his bills. Sergeant, I'm not putting the Majority Leader on a clock, and so I recognize Councilman Powers for questions on his bills.
Thank you. I'll try to be quick anyway, out of respect for everyone here. I wanted to answer, first of all, thank you for your testimony. Without question, happy to work with DEP to make sure that legislation we're working on is efficient and effective. I think your recommendations make some sense, and appreciate the constructive feedback on the various different programs we're talking about here, and I'll ask some questions. I want to start just taking a step back. We were looking at some of the data around noise enforcement in the city, which helped inform us on the legislation and going into the hearing. It feels like it's a shared responsibility between DEP and NYPD right now when you call 311 and file a, or reach out to, call the city and file those complaints. I don't, trying to understand, what is the actual separation of duties there? How does the NYPD respond to calls? How does the DEP respond to calls? What is the current resource allocation for the DEP to noise complaints? It seems like a tremendously high amount of them are going to the PD, and they're going out and responding. Various levels of enforcement are happening. But I guess just to understand this conversation, you have to kind of understand how we're doing enforcement in the first place. So can you share with us how DEP's role is shaped in this conversation and where handoff happens between DEP and NYPD, or how the NYPD or DEP might share responsibilities here?
Yeah, thank you very much for the question. So first and foremost, we have air and noise inspectors that are cross-trained individuals. We have about 65 of them onboard at DEP. And we are generally enforcing the sections of the code that I mentioned in my testimony, the commercial music, the HVAC systems, and we are looking at joint operations with NYPD as well. So that is something that has really been sparked by the Adams Administration. We're very grateful for the support that we're getting from NYPD, and I think they're grateful for the support that they get from us. And we do conduct a lot of shared, what we call, operations whereby we're balancing the best of both features of the departments. So we have training on the noise meters. We can actually take those measurements. A lot of our violations are actually at a higher cost. So it's also a benefit to NYPD to be supported by DEP. And we have had many of these shared operations, especially during the weekends, and especially in areas where we're having very high complaints.
So I'll just follow up to that. If I have a noisy construction site, let's say, after-hours variance, or even just a noisy construction site that it feels like it's exceeding the decibel limit, I call 311. Is it DEP or NYPD? Who's showing up?
It would be DEP.
No, DEP?
Construction noise, yes.
Okay, because that's in the bucket that you select from. So if I call 311, they are farming it out to the agency where they believe the jurisdiction lies.
Yes.
So anything outside of the ones that you named would be going to NYPD for them to respond to? If it was a noisy neighbor, a noisy party, or something like that, which I do see they respond to a lot?
Yes. Generally, the 311 scripts are very precise about who is getting routed, which violation. I don't have those scripts here with me, but we could provide them.
Okay. What is the average response time for your 65 inspectors?
We are generally going within a one-week timeframe. So if we have a call, let's say there's a dislodged construction plate, right? Let's say it's road work, and we could respond to that within a day or two. But let's say we're responding under our Section 24-231, where a resident would like us to take a reading within their premise. That we would schedule an appointment for. So they may have called us about an activity that's happening on a Friday night, and they know that they need to schedule that appointment with us for the next Friday night, and that's why we have those timeframes that's reserved for those types of events.
I mean, unfortunately for the person who's staying up all night, pulling their hair out because they have a noisy thing going on outside their premises, it's, that next Friday won't be, will be far too long to respond to that, which I think we're trying to get into that, including providing people more information, you know, whether 24 hours, 40 hours, whatever it is of that X report. I think we are sometimes lacking the ability to force in real time, which is really when the noise issues tend to happen, and then the enforcement right now. I don't disagree with the NYPD being part of it because they are, we have precincts in all of our neighborhoods, and they can respond to it quickly, but of course, we're pulling them off one assignment to do another when we do that. How many decibel meter machines do you have that are dedicated to construction?
And let me just go back to your earlier comment. I think that was an excellent point. We do have rapid response units in place, and the way that we can work around making the appointment... the appointment, let's say, for a citizen to issue under that section of the code, that is the benefit of having certain, various sections of the code.
Right. About the civilian, you're talking about the benefit of having the civilian complaint program, if you reform it in the way you desire to?
Yeah, it's the benefit of having that unreasonable noise. So if we wanted to respond to that complaint in real time, we could get out there and we could respond to that complaint. We could respond to various sections used to get at the same purpose. So just wanted to make that. How many noise meters do we have?
All of the 65 inspectors have noise meters.
And those can read any level of noise, whether it's construction noise, or it's a deci, it basically just records the, the sound, the decibel, like level?
They're very sophisticated machines. They're calibrated regularly, and the inspectors are trained on them. They're able to evaluate decibel levels on the A scale, which is what the human ear can detect. And they also can evaluate on other octave bands, which is very important to get to some of the bass or C scales.
Okay. And for, you mentioned, we just go into the civilian complaint program, you mentioned something around there being no time minimums related when they record video. Can you just explain what you mean by that? When, I can read you back your part of that, but there was a, a point when you were making, I think, recommendations about it, that with some of the videos, I believe there were not time minimums required, involved in them. So it becomes a costly endeavor. I can find my underline of that. But do, if you recall, I can, I'm happy to read. Here it is. It's, I will find, actually, I'll find that section. I'll come back to it. But I did want to ask another thing. You said 90% of the approximately 6,000 noise complaints filed in 2023, so this year, by citizens were filed by only two people. How many total people have participated in that program?
I think we have six.
Like, what is the other 10%?
I think we have six.
Six civilians in New York City are filing that. Two are responsible for 90%.
The majority are filed by six.
And 1,000 in the area around Times Square. That's my district. That's, okay. And the, just to understand the violations once more, a citizen enforcer can receive as much as $660. So it's capped at $660, or that's just how the percentage would play out if you add them up?
That's the first violation.
First violation, okay.
Yeah. And then there would be a higher penalty for the second violation, and then an even higher penalty for the third violation.
So what are those violations, first, second, third, amount-wise? Not the citizen complaint part of it, but with two, the business, we have, presumably have some business owners here or here to go talk about this.
Yeah.
What is the fine on them?
So the first violation is, generally speaking, on the citizen issued, is 440. And then the second violation is 880. And the third violation is 1,320.
That's what the business pays, and then the civilian is taking 20, I think, right now, 25% of that?
25% if the department participates, and 50% if the department does not participate. And then there's also even higher penalties for the first, second, and third for default penalties. So they're very steep.
Okay, got it. So we have, and I am familiar with Times Square businesses and non-Times Square businesses who have been, have been raising concerns about this program. There was a, I can't find my other, I will find it. But the question I had after that, I wanted to talk to about the noise cameras, which we have legislation to codify that program, to expand it, maybe perhaps to distribute it in an effective way. Can you just talk to us about how that program is going right now? I understand you are going through a pilot program. I've seen, I think, some feedback on how it's working so far. I think you're rolling it out more. Are you able to share us how many noise cameras there are in the city right now? I have your violation number, I think, in your testimony, but just, any feedback on what, what the department is learning about that program as you're rolling it out?
Yeah, so we're very, very pleased with the program now. We had one camera where we were piloting. We moved it several times, so we've practiced at different locations. We have learned that we need to have a certain configuration or roadway geometry for the camera that is part of the microphone system to be very deliberate in terms of discerning which vehicle generated the noise. But we are doing so now quite successfully. We currently have nine cameras that we've purchased, and we have seven that are, have been installed.
Say those numbers one more. You have nine purchased, seven installed.
Seven installed. We've been generally issuing our violations off the one camera. So this should expand quite rapidly, very quickly, as these other nine cameras come on, online.
And location-wise, I think I read something, Long Island Expressway, difficult to differentiate between vehicles because of the five. But what are you learning in terms of geographic location?
We're looking throughout the five boroughs, and in fact, we've had a lot of recommendations from council members for where they're experiencing a lot of complaints. And really, you know, your constituents are the eyes and ears on the ground, so we do take their recommendations very seriously. In fact, I believe that based on the camera experiences that we've had so far, that they have been proven very right because we are issuing a lot of violations, not just for the loud muffler noise, but also for unnecessary horn honking that is not related to emergency situations.
Okay. Just to be respectful of the other sponsors here on the chair, I want to stop there. We'd be happy to continue to talk with the department about my legislation, the five bills we have. We think there's more to do here, and expanding this enforcement around this issue is an easy way to deliver some wins for New Yorkers who are pulling their hair out. And we, these are all, I think, informed by real-life experiences. So look forward to working with you guys on that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. One more great package of bills that you're bringing forward. I really appreciate you, you doing this, and very happy to give you the latitude to ask questions as long as you want. And so thank you for that. I just told Councilmember Holden that I was going to ask a question before I go to him, but I just had a, the thing that I was going to read from, I want some copies made of it because I'm going to give them to DEP. And so while that's going on, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Holden for questions.
Thank you, Chair. And I just want to, just follow through on Majority Leader's questions on the noise camera, because it can't happen fast enough. We, you know, you have the, the mufflers that backfire, sound like gunshots. I have them every single night within earshot of my home. And the guy comes by every, you know, almost the same time. So these noise cameras, are they very expensive, first of all? I mean, there, there's probably different, different makes and models and so forth. And how, how expensive are they? Because that'll dictate how many we put up, I guess.
Yeah, they're running about 50,000, 35, yeah, 35,000. They will improve.
35,000 each?
Each.
Okay. And you have nine cameras. Seven were installed, but how come the other two weren't installed yet?
They're just going up now as we speak. We have staff that are employing them.
Now, so these, and I'm worried, because when I hear we don't have that many, I'm just worried that they're going to be in Manhattan and not in Queens, only because, you know, there's, there's a bunch of bills that we have. But I think we also have to sleep in Queens, too. And, and we chose to live in residential areas mostly, yet we have things that we've never seen before. We have, first of all, why would somebody modify their muffler to, to make it sound like gunshots? We'd never had that before. We had some people that just soup up their cars, and obviously, that happens. It's always happened. But now, there's a strange phenomenon. People just like to make noise. And if the cameras are that successful and can generate, again, I just wanted to ask about the fines. Let's say you do get a guy with a muffler, and you caught them. What's the fine?
Eight hundred dollars.
Eight hundred. This is why I like DEP when they're involved, because when NYPD is involved, and I just want to ask a couple of questions. I guess, I'm on the clock, right? Yeah, I see.
We're partners on this whole civilian thing, and so I'm going to take off the, plus I'm waiting for my stuff, so knock yourself out. It's good.
Okay. Just, just the coordination between NYPD and DEP, because I've had chronic locations where NYPD cannot handle. They just, the local precinct, and I listened to the scanner, they're busy with 911 calls. The, the, the noise complaints, when they get around to it, and, and it's rarely now, with the new police department, is it within eight hours, like they promised on 311. It's sometimes the next day, 24 hours, and of course, the noise is probably gone. And so when does, when does NYPD, are they mandated to contact DEP at one point because they can't address it? It's a chronic location.
So that's an excellent question, and thank you for it. When we do have those chronic locations, and again, I just want to recognize Mayor Adams and Commissioner Agawal at DEP, because this has really improved under their tenure, the agencies, or the police department and the DEP working together with these joint operations. And again, blending the skillsets of, of both departments really well, where we can go out and do the technical work, we can do the measurements, we can issue to the offending parties at the higher rate of penalty. Whereas the police department is helping us safely access some of these locations. We do not have armed personnel, so it is very important that they stay safe. So it, it has really been a wonderful blend. If you have locations, you should please provide them to us, because we are constantly on the move with these joint ops.
Yeah, normally, it's, it's neighbor and neighbor who say, well, they're playing the radio too loud, that kind of thing. And, but the police increasingly now cannot handle this. That's why, but I'm also wondering with all these, this package of bills that we have, are 65 inspectors enough to handle this, this load here now? Because I, I don't know how you promote the awareness of the citizen noise complaint program, because a lot of people don't know about it. And maybe we would get more people participating rather than the bad actors that you, you say, they're doing it for profit. But it's not, it's not under the, you know, if we did promote this more, we might get really to the point where enforcement is, and, and we do have, enforcement is good, and we do have a livable city. But right now, again, I can't get the police to handle parking summonses anymore in my district. It's so bad because of their handling increased 911 calls.
Yeah, that's a very sensible recommendation, and we agree that we could do a better job of marketing this. We, I think we've been a little reluctant. We've holding off because we'd like to make these reforms first, so that we can ensure that we have a successful program to promote. So we would greatly appreciate working with you.
And I like the strategy. Let's get the, the program to where we, it'll function properly, and we can get, you know, get some of these issues solved, whether through legislation or regulations. But I do like the idea, but I would like to see the, the program operate. And, because I'm dealing with the same locations over and over again, and I, and I did speak to the commissioner about this. But I do, on chronic locations, I recommend DEP because that'll put an end to it. You get a, you know, a few thousand-dollar fine. You're not going to be playing, you know, music very loud constantly every night, or just on weekends. So I, I like that idea. So, but do you need more inspectors? That's what I'm, you know, because 65 for the entire city of New York, and noise seems to be one of the biggest complaints on 311.
Yeah. Tough question to answer during these budget constraints. We do feel like we have enough to respond to the complaints that we're getting within the mandated timeframes through the mayor's management report. We're always meeting our targets. However, additional staff would always be welcome. Clearly, you know, we would put them to good use. I will say that in recent history, we've been working much more efficiently. We're working smarter. We have utilized technology to our advantage. We have heat maps. We call them the heat maps. They're generally, when we can see complaints coming in, our supervisors can see that in real time, and they can deploy people to those areas. So yes, we feel somewhat constrained, as all agencies are now. But we do feel like we are working as efficiently as we possibly can, and through the use of technology, there's probably room for additional improvement.
Right. Let me just go back, and last question, I promised, Chair. The, the big, one of the biggest complaints we get, and probably the most frustrating, because the police can't catch these guys. The guys that play their music very loud in the car, and they ride around, and they wake the whole neighborhood up. And they set, they even set up, this, it's so loud, not only with their mufflers, but they're setting off car alarms as they drive down the street. A camera program that would catch these guys, you know, again, as long as it, we, we don't identify where these cameras are, you know, like if people know that where the speed cameras are, so they don't, they'll drive down every other street, but they'll avoid those streets, or at least slow up. Are these cameras hidden? Are they noticeable?
They're, they're hidden in plain sight. We have had a circumstance where one was detected, and absolutely, it was avoided. There's a lot of clubs, these automobile clubs, they got the word out really quickly, and we were able to get there. We moved the camera as quickly as they were able to identify it. So we do try to disguise them, and we do keep the location secret.
Okay, but I'm just offering my, my budget, a portion of my budget that I get in my council office for these cameras, because I think they'd be a godsend for peace and quiet, and we need to sleep at night in, in New York City. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Holden. Pardon me. I'm going to take some, it's water. Okay, folks, I'm having a sidebar with Alyssa Preston about, about a, about an appeal from a citizen enforcer or versus, versus Jackson Hole Restaurant. And the appeal was dated, you know, July 27, 2023. And by my reading of it, it's pretty plain, plain language, it seems to indicate quite clearly that, you know, with regard to, with regard to sound that is emanating from the interior of an establishment, that, that, that 24-244B is the wrong section of the code for that. It's really meant more for outward-facing speakers, if you're trying to draw people in, for, you know, you know, as I said before, coming in by neckties here, or whatever. And so with this having been put forward by OATH in, in July 27, you know, 2023, the question would be, it, it seems to me that OATH has established that 24-244B is the wrong section of the code for the, for, for the, you know, citizen enforcers that are coming forward with these, with the, with the, with these violations. Now, with, with this in place, and this also seems to clash a little bit with the, with the August, whatever it was, resolution of the board that says, okay, if, if, if we can establish that, that the, that the infraction or the problem or the violation has been fixed, then, you know, we're not going to levy a penalty. And so in July, it says it's the wrong section of the code for this kind of violation. In August, OATH is saying, well, as long as you can show that it's fixed, then we're not, they, they don't, they don't seem to, they, they don't seem to agree with one another. But I'm, I'm going with the July one, because it just plain all says that it's, you know, the wrong section of the code. Now, if I'm DEP, and I get the ability to Now, if I'm DEP, and I get the ability to, you know, dismiss violations as frivolous or whatever the term is, if you're using the wrong section of the code, then why not just squash it there rather than just not act and have the civilian enforcer go to Oath, have the person default, 59% default, and then the city gets its money, and then the bounty hunters get their money? It just seems that this provides some clarity as to that section of the code being the wrong section of the code that is being used by the civilian enforcers. And so, that's kind of my statement. And so, the question would be that since this has happened, and there's been some clarity made that this is the wrong section of the code, has DEP changed the number of violations that it is dismissing from the civilian enforcers when they're presented to DEP based on this, you know, appeal by Oath, saying it's the wrong section of the code? And what is DEP's sense of this, of this whole thing, being like the wrong section of the code? And why, I don't want to make characterization, why is DEP sitting back, you know, sitting back and letting these things go through to, and tying up Oath? And getting the business owners to come down there? Most likely not, 59% don't. And so, it's, you know, forgive the cynic in me, that, you know, it's money for the city, okay, and then, you know, money for the bounty hunters. I don't get it. And so, I would just like, you know, someone to opine on what's going on here when we have a document in hand, by my interpretation, showing that that section is the wrong section of the code for all of these violations that are being put forward by the civilian or by what I call the, hang on. Yeah, by the civilian enforcers. Some people call them citizen enforcers. I prefer civilian enforcement enforcers. So, that's my statement, question, statement, question. So, there you have it. I don't want to be you right now, but sorry.
So, thank you for that. We are aware of the appeals decision that you're referencing. I think it's important to draw the distinction that...
If you just speak right into the mic like this.
Sorry, is that better?
Yeah, yes.
So, yes, we are aware of that appeals decision. I think it's important to point out in that particular appeals decision, the court focused on the fact that they were using it for the entertainment of the dining population. And they also pointed out that that particular location referenced in the appeal was near the Grand Central Parkway, so it was very hard for the citizen to prove it was for a commercial or business advertising purpose.
No, no, just stop right there. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not following that line of, I'm not...
No, I'm going to explain it to you. So, I think it's helpful, that appeals decision, because there's no longer presumption that just because it's audible that they're innately in violation of 244. So, what DEP is doing is we're reviewing as we have been...
But I'm going to take issue with that because just plainly audible or whatever, you know, gets into the whole, you know, that's something that we put to bed 20 years ago with noise meters and all that. And so, like, that's what we're supposed to be doing. And so, the whole plainly audible standard, which is like the unreasonable noise standard, is, you know, hearkens back to a day before we did the noise meters and all that. And we put that to bed 20 years ago. And so, I can't get, I can't get past that.
So, I understand your consternation. So, 244B is in the code, and that does have a statement that basically it must be for a commercial or business advertising purpose. DEP...
Advertising purposes.
Right.
So, 244B is for advertising purposes. But yet, all the bounty hunters are on there, putting their cellphone or whatever the hell it is, you know, like, you know, right up against the glass. And, you know, DEP could have been dismissing these things from the get-go. And like, why aren't, so why weren't they before? And certainly, why are they not doing that now?
So, we are dismissing a great portion of the citizen complaints that come to us based on lack of appropriate evidence, but we have not been opining and adjudicating whether or not, you know, what the case specifically is.
Yeah, but certainly, DEP is in a position to know whether or not the wrong section of code is being, is even being applied. Doesn't that give, if someone comes forward to DEP, you know, complain it, and then they have this, oh, but, so did they come to you with a ticket, or they just come to you? Or they couldn't, they come to you with their homemade ticket?
They come to us first. We have 30 days in which to review the citizen complaint. For a portion of them, we determine that we don't believe that the evidence is sufficient for anybody to pursue that complaint, so just based on...
Do you have any kind of, any kind of statistic on, for the civilian enforcers? How many come to you that have been dismissed by, or whatever the word is, you know?
Yes, we have that number. So, Alyssa, if you want to report that. But ultimately, I agree that since we have these decisions now, I think that we do, and you're making that point, that we probably have the basis of more dismissals. And we can do that. That takes staff away from DEP's other business. But we certainly, based on what we're trying to do to support our local economy and our small businesses, now that we have these rulings and decisions, we can probably dismiss a great deal more. But also, the reforms that we are proposing, I believe, will eliminate this problem in the future.
Right, and certainly, that's a good conversation, but, you know, right now, we have a situation where, you know, 59% of the businesses get these things, they don't show up, they get whacked, and then, you know, the bounty hunters get all their money, $660, whatever. And this is, you know, by your own testimony, and the strong language in your testimony is a real, is a real blight and a real problem and a real, you know, imposition on businesses in the city. And, you know, we in government just don't really have the, you know, don't have the luxury of just putting, you know, harsh language in testimony when DEP comes forward to counsel. The whole idea is to, once these decisions come forward, and they're, you know, moving the needle on what is and what is not, you know, a valid violation, you know, then DEP not only has the right, but the obligation to make sure that it steps up and says, okay, we can do, you know, we can come down harder on these. And then, and then that has, then that has a chilling effect on the people who are writing the violations in the first place.
Yes, we can dismiss...
Because they're like starting to get shut down and shut out because they're using the wrong damn section of the code.
We can dismiss based on meritless and frivolous, I believe that's the language of the section. And if we determine, it's just very, very difficult sometimes by viewing those videos to determine what the intended purpose is of those speakers. It's just difficult for us, and we, there's that blurry line that we don't like to cross, which is that we are not the adjudicating body. That would be Oath. So, that's the fine line that we're walking.
I'll put that under the category of what I call nice try. You know what I mean? And I would have said the same thing if I were you. But, you know, the fact remains that, you know, with, and again, Oath too. They got this thing in July, and then they got this thing in August that don't appear to me to sort of agree. But both are kind of in different ways sending the message that we're sick of this nonsense. We don't want to do this anymore. We got, you know, businesses getting jammed up, we got people walking away with like pockets full of hundreds of thousands of dollars a year from this, and we're helping them essentially, you know, perpetuate a scam. And this can't be. And, you know, I wouldn't want to be part of DEP top management that's got to, you know, shift resources in order to, you know, make this thing go away. But, you know, it sort of is what it is, and the people who are paying the price is not, is not DEP, it's these businesses that are getting these violations, they don't know what they are, they don't want to hire a lawyer, or they don't know, or whatever, they're trying to run their business, got to take a whole day off and go down, they don't know what they're going to face. Hire a lawyer and do this, I'm just going to break even anyway. So, why don't I just pay the vig, so to speak? Vig is a slang term, most people might know what that is, but, you know, those my age and older would probably know that. But, so this is my, you know, this is what I get from, because people know I'm chair of the committee. I get businesses from all over the city like yelling and screaming at me, and then I get the bounty hunters yelling and screaming at me with their, you know, very aggressive tactics and, you know, being aimed at my staff. And I'm like, what the heck are we doing here? And so, happy to work, you know, going forward with, you know, things that we could and should do. But I think there, you know, needs to be a change, and really needs to be a change now. And so, you know, whatever you need to do in order, you tell me what you think is going to happen now. After, you know, you're going to go back to Lefrak and say Gennaro did his whole thing. And so, so...
We're riled up too about this. I mean, there have been, again, a lot of conversations with small business services, our colleagues over there are very frustrated with this program. And again, I think the best thing that we can all do is move quickly on this package of reforms, additional...
I know, but right now, but right now, there are people, you know, there are people interacting with DEP today on behalf of, the number of summonses is like off the charts. And so, all for the reforms, but I'm like, what we have in hand right now, you know, appeals of oath, the resolution of oath, and it would appear that since these resolutions have, and this appeal and this resolution came forward, I don't think DEP has really changed the number of violations that they themselves are taking the opportunity to dismiss as frivolous or whatever the word is, or not consistent with the code or whatever. Or has there been a difference? If there has been, if there has been a difference, now's the time to say it, now I'll be the first one to applaud, you know, but has that been the case?
Yeah, as I said, I think now we have a greater opportunity to dismiss some of these cases.
But the time is now, like this is July.
And the time is now, there's nothing I can do about pending cases with oath. So, that's a clear...
Well, I think, you know, once we do something, those that have not been adjudicated, you know, we could tie all those up in a bow and just get rid of them. But again, I don't play lawyer here, but, you know, to the extent there is this kind of, you know, this kind of, you know, injustice in the name of justice playing out in the city, where, you know, business owners are getting fleeced, and, you know, DEP has, you know, decisions in hand and can, and can just, you know, kind of, you know, nip these at the bud and not drag an oath, which is clearly sick of this. And I think that's, I think that's the obligation. I think, and in the meantime, we work through like what we're going to do in terms of, you know, reforms, both, you know, to the civilian enforcement for noise as well as idling, which we're not really talking about today, you did in your statement, and I thought it was important for you to do that. And so, I gave you a little latitude on that, but I'm kind of like decoupling, you know, officially decoupling, at least for now, because, you know, this is the fire that is raging, the one right now with the bounty hunters and with the businessers, you know, with the businesses that are being impacted by it, and, you know, government kind of throwing up its hands a little bit, saying, yeah, we could do more, but we're busy, you know, and that just, you know, in the case of this kind of wildfire, that doesn't, that doesn't sort of carry the day, you know, it's just not good enough. I still like you all, you know what I mean? It's not about that, you know, but just, I think we need to do better. Let me see what other, hang on. Oh, my very patient partner in government here and partner in the council, Lincoln Wrestler.
I thought you were going to call me loquacious.
What's that?
I thought you were going to call me loquacious.
Oh, yeah, you're that and more, my friend.
I'll be brief today.
So, you thought I was, you thought I was, you thought I was a tough customer? Okay. I'm, you're going to get it now. Okay, so, I recognize my friendly colleague, Lincoln Wrestler, for questions.
Thank you very much. I'm not giving anybody an overly hard time today, but I do really appreciate Chair Gennaro's leadership on this topic and comments of my colleagues. You know, there is a noise complaint to 311 every minute of every hour of every day for the year, across the year for the city of New York. We get, I think there were 525, 523,000 complaints last year. And, you know, we get it, we live in a loud city, and we're accustomed and acclimated to a certain extent of it, to a certain extent. But in many areas, it is just inexcusable, and it's very challenging to get any kind of meaningful enforcement from DEP or from the NYPD. I recognize that, I think of those 520,000 complaints, only 60-something thousand of them get sent to DEP. The vast majority of them go to the police department. So, we should bring them in next time, Chair Gennaro, and give them a hard time about their failure to enforce on any of the noise complaints that we have across our district. The stuff that drives me the craziest are the extremely loud mufflers, the extremely loud motorcycles that ride through our communities and have no regard whatsoever for our neighborhoods. And I'm interested in just understanding where we are on the camera pilot study and the status of your plans to expand it. My recollection is that you've had it at five different locations over the past year and change, year and a half. We had at some point been approached about identifying locations in our district that we thought would be viable. We suggested a number of locations. None have been selected as far as I know, much to my chagrin. And we want you to have a presence in our community and to be utilizing this technology to impose fines for people who are incredibly disrespectful of our neighborhoods. And so, how are we doing on this pilot? Are we finally ready to acknowledge its success, its efficacy or lack thereof? And what are the plans for expansion?
Well, thank you very much for the question. We really are pleased with the noise camera pilot program. This all began during the pandemic, or at least we saw our roads being overtaken by a lot of drag racing, loud camera, loud mufflers. And it was very difficult to be able to deploy personnel in all of these locations simultaneously. It was frustrating us, it was frustrating NYPD. And we read about a program that was successful in London. So, what we did is we sent over for one of their pieces of equipment so that we could pilot it here in New York City. We are extremely pleased with the level of precision of the microphones that are associated with the cameras. They are directionally oriented so that you can really pinpoint and discern which is the vehicle that's creating the noise. That's not in all cases. In some cases, it is not easily discernible. We don't feel like that would hold up in court. But we are pursuing quite a large volume of these associated just with the one camera. So, we had about 250 summons that were issued so far. We have about another 100 that are pending. And I was reporting earlier that we have nine cameras in total that were purchased, and we just finished installing seven of them. So, the other two will happen in the next couple of weeks.
None in District 33.
I have to check. We have not excluded you purposefully. I honestly would have to check.
You haven't purposely excluded me, but I hope that you prioritize our district because downtown Brooklyn has a phenomenal amount of noise, and we could use some attention, especially by the entrances to the Brooklyn and Manhattan Bridges, the levels of honking, the noise of the cars, it's extraordinary. And there should be more attention there. And I don't think, I would love to see more PD enforcement on this, but I don't think that that's the right solution. I think that the cameras are a better approach. Appreciate that you have nine cameras. Could we, are we in a position where we could allocate capital dollars in this year's budget for additional cameras in our district?
It's hard for us to...
How do we get you to say yes?
To mix capital money with our expense budgets, so that...
We purchase cameras with the NYPD, Argus cameras, to, in high-crime areas in our districts to try and make sure that our police departments have the tools they need to be successful. Why couldn't we do the same? Why couldn't we do the same here?
I'm very welcoming of the idea. And if we could figure out a way to do that, I would definitely support it.
I don't know that DEP takes capital money from the council, but if we could identify an alternative agency that could be a partner so that we could purchase cameras and place them in locations that we jointly determine are most helpful, then we could help expedite that. Do you have any sense of what the cost would be per camera?
Yes, we were just talking about that earlier too. It's about $35,000 per camera. And I will say that they are paying for themselves. So they are a wonderful use of technology. Again, we are not a profit-driven enterprise. We don't run on quotas or anything like that. But given the quality of life disturbances that this creates, I believe it is a very effective enforcement tool.
Okay. I would really like to fob with you, Deputy Commissioner, about how we can be ready in this upcoming budget to allocate additional capital money to bring additional cameras to our district. So we'd like to start those conversations quickly. And then just lastly, as Chair Gennaro gives me the hook, in light of the passage of the Sleep Act, the New York Sleep Act up in Albany this year that went into effect in, or last year that went into effect in April, enforcing decibel limits and raising fines for illegal muffler modifications, has there been any additional DEP enforcement or any ways that we can demonstrate that we've been able to execute on the efficacy of this law?
I'll let Alyssa handle that because we want to differentiate between the vehicle traffic law and the enforcement of the DEP's noise code.
Yeah, I was just going to add that the penalty is $800 now, which we were able to do as a result of the Sleep Act in March of 2022. Before that, it was around $250. So that did give us the authority to be able to increase that penalty. We refer to the VTL to set the sound limit that we use for the camera. But the authority for us to implement the program is purely within the New York City noise code.
And so I look forward to working with you on capital allocations this year. We will figure out however we can make that happen. We would very much like to see an increased presence of these cameras around our district, and I imagine many of my colleagues would want to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. And we have no more questions for the panel. We really appreciate your, you know, being here and it seems like the message kind of sunk in. We're appreciative of that. Look forward to the work, you know, coming ahead, that we can, you know, work on this with the noise and also the civilian with the idling, which we're not talking about today. But we do very much look forward to that. Always a pleasure to see you and thanks very much for your good testimony and, yeah. So, thank you. And with that, we have our first panel. The council could call the first panel. Yes. Okay, we have a first panel of Andrew Ridgie, Max Bookman, and Robert Bookman, all testifying on behalf of the New York Hospitality Alliance. Okay, I'm going to call upon council to swear in this, swear in the panel. Okay, Sergeant, normally we said it at two, this is like a juicy topic, we're going to go to three minutes, give people a chance to say what they have to say, even though it's, that means I don't have dinner tonight. No loss there.
I can't say my name in two minutes.
Now that said, people don't have to take up three minutes if they, you know. What's that? Wait, did we do swear? Did we swear? Okay. Yeah, we just swear in the administration, those folks. So please proceed with your good testimony. We appreciate you being here.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chair, council members, committee staff. My name is Andrew Ridgie. I am the Executive Director of the New York City Hospitality Alliance. We are a not-for-profit association that represents thousands of bars and restaurants across the five boroughs. So first, I want to thank you both, Chair, council member, for introducing legislation that will put an end to the unacceptable abuse that far too many bars and restaurants have been subject to by a tiny group of self-interested private bounty hunters. These bounty hunters are not your average citizens. They've turned off, turned profiting into the, off the backs of small business owners into an opportunity. They wake up, they go across the city to different neighborhoods, and they target small businesses. Worse, they're relying on an incorrect reading of the law to do it, as was recently recognized by OSHA Appeal Unit, which was referenced earlier. They repeat this process over and over again, enriching themselves in significant sums. This is not how New York City should do sound enforcement. In a moment, you're going to hear from the alliance's council, both Robert and Max Bookman. They'll speak a bit about the history of sound enforcement and the correct law that governs here, as well as some comments on these specific bills. But first, I'd like to say Councilmember Holden's bill will clarify that the correct statute for policing commercial sound violations is the one that has been on the book for nearly two decades and which you are very familiar with, the one that provides objective criteria based on a decibel reading. It would send a stark message to the bounty hunters victimizing bars and restaurants that the section of the law they are currently using to go after small businesses is off limits. Second, for those who may not get the message, Councilmember Gennaro's bill would cap the amount of money bounty hunters could collect from initiating these summonses. But after listening to DEP's very thoughtful commentary on this matter, it seems that the best idea may just get rid of the section entirely of the noise code that permits civilian complaints and these bounty hunters to go around and exploit small businesses because of the degree to which they're doing it and some of the really incredibly horrible techniques they are using. There were some comments we had about limiting the ability of a citizen to live within 200 feet of a business to be permitted to issue these violations, but perhaps the idea is just get rid of that section in its entirety. But also, we want to make sure that the thousands and thousands of these summonses that are currently pending are tossed out as well. So we'd love to see a provision that not only applies moving forward in the future once the law is enacted, but also to ensure that all of these summonses that are pending are tossed out. So for these reasons, the Hospitality Alliance strongly supports these efforts, and you'll hear from my colleagues at the Hospitality Alliance in more specificity. But I want to thank you for your time and your effort to address these issues. If anything, you both know that we need to support our small businesses, and what's happening here just sends absolutely the wrong message to not only our small business owners, workers.
Thank you, Anthony. I got to move forward. The way I want to do this is I do, I just want to pose a question. You made reference in your statement to Mr. Bookman that was, was going to give us some legal commentary. Let me put that in the form of a question. Mr. Bookman, if you, you know, would opine with your, with your, you know, very substantial, you know, legal background going back, you were part of this 20 years ago. And so if you just take us from 20 years to now, give us some legal commentary on what you saw play out before us today.
Sure. My name is Robert Bookman, counsel to the New York City Hospitality Alliance, but I'm also a partner in the Small Manhattan Law Firm, Poszetsky and Bookman. We specialize in representing small businesses and have been doing so for 35 years now. So you're correct, about 20-some-odd years ago, you and I were both involved with the once-in-a-generation change of the noise code. And you did an excellent job as Chair of the Committee at that point, bringing in all the stakeholders that were going to be impacted by this new noise code. As you said before, there was construction, there was garbage collection, cars. One of the last sections, actually, one of the last things that remained was the hospitality industry, commercial noise. There had been on the books for a long time what was called an unreasonable noise standard. It meant, as Councilman Holden said, anything anybody wanted it to mean. So it meant everything and it meant nothing. And businesses were complaining that the default violation from the NYPD when they went to a place was issue an unreasonable noise summons. It invariably required you to hire a lawyer, and they all got dismissed, but they would be used against you when your liquor license was up for renewal, that you had these violations. And we brought that to your attention, and we had one specific request, and that is that there be an objective standard for the measurement of sound emanating from a commercial establishment. It didn't seem complicated. Noise is one of the things that, in fact, can be measured. And thanks to you, you told the administration, Mayor Bloomberg, and the chairman, Emily.
Lloyd, yeah.
Emily Lloyd at the time, that unless that issue was resolved, you're not passing the noise code. And if you recall, it was the end of a session, and if they didn't pass it in December, they would have to start all over again. She went to, Emily Lloyd, Commissioner, went to the mayor and explained the problem. And as it is now well-known in folklore, the mayor Bloomberg, who was a techy kind of person in his day, said, so what's the problem? And she said, well, if there's an objective standard, every police department and DEP will have to have a handheld noise meter. And he said, so go buy them. And that resolved it, and the, we passed a specific criteria that, as you recall, which requires a certain amount of decibels above ambient during the day, a different one, you know, a lesser standard at night when people are entitled to more quiet. And we have lived happily ever after for the last 20 years where we have not had these unreasonable noise violations. But businesses know with a couple hundred dollars, they can, they buy these handheld meters, and they measure themselves pursuant to the law when their sound is leaking from inside, which it often does when you're playing background music for patrons, you have windows and doors open, but they can measure it for themselves.
I was just going to say that because I'm the chairman, I'm not, I'm not subject to the clock in terms of the answer.
And that's been the standard objective criteria, not subjectivity, for 20 years now, until these bounty hunters found a 1972 section of the noise code that I am embarrassed to admit I did not know exists. I'm not sure you did either, which.
Nor did the Bloomberg administration in 2003.
No, nor did the Bloomberg administration, nor did the Commissioner Emily Lloyd, which apparently was put in before there was a 311, before community boards were even really being established, where people didn't have a way to complain about noise. So this was put in there that if you had, if you were a true citizen and wanted to complain about, you know, somebody downstairs from, you know, or around the corner, you know, on a commercial strip and, you know, in Queens or in a building underneath, there was a mechanism to do it. No one knew it existed because it was virtually never used until these bounty hunters decided to abuse the system. And to answer the second part of your legal question, they were abusing it in improper way because they are citing the section of the law, which we clarified, or at least we thought we clarified. But I think we need Councilman Holden's bill to make it crystal clear in black and white that what we meant and what has been happening for the last 20 years be the law for the next 20 years, and that is a specific objective, objection, a specific objectable criteria. So that solves that problem, but it doesn't solve the bounty hunter problem, which is new to me. As a matter of fact, the first time we started hearing about this last November, we quite frankly thought it was a scam that somebody was trying to collect money from a restaurant because it had no name on it, it had DEP crossed out, it had some P.O. box. So we told people, ignore it. Then when we started to get a lot of them, we went to DEP and they said, yeah, no, it's a section of law that nobody knew about, and there are these guys issuing tons of them. So that's the, you know, that's the noise code issue and the citizen complaint history, legal history, how we got to where we are today.
Let me get to my next question.
Sure.
And, you know, thank you for your indulgence in keeping you up here, but we've worked on this stuff a long time. And now, with regard to the oath appeal of July 27th, the, you know, I as a non-lawyer and the council to the committee, you know, seems convinced that this kind of rules out, you know, 24-244B as, as an applicable section of the code to be used as the bounty hunters are using it. Do you believe that this, that this appeal is, you know, very dispositive of that, of that legal fact?
I do. And I do want to say that I was very impressed with DEP's testimony here today, how their complete support of Councilman Holden's bill. They provided plenty of support, you know, for your bill. I'm frankly shocked that the situation is even as bad, it's worse than I thought it was, where only six people have filed these citizen complaints, and two of them, 90% of them, and only six have filed more than one. It's really, really a bad situation. So if they felt that they were constrained by this 1972 law which allowed for bounty hunter complaints before this appellate decision, and I disagree with them about to what extent they are an adjudicator under this law. It's true, when DEP issues a summons or Consumer Affairs or any other agency, they are the plaintiff, but this law provides for, is something different. And so this law did not allow for, quote, citizens, and I put it in quotes because I don't even know if these two people are citizens of the City of New York.
That's why I call them civilian. That's why I prefer, that's why I prefer the term civilian.
I don't even know where they live. They could live in Long Island, as far as I know, and they're just, you know, making a living here in New York. But it gives the agency three options. They can't just go right to oath, you know, and submit a violation. It created a different process. And that process is, DEP has three options. They could say, hey, this is a really good violation based on the amount of evidence we see, we're going to take it over as the petitioner in the normal course of a violation. Or, you know, we think it's a little bit weak, but you, you citizen bounty hunter could proceed with it on your own, if, you know, if you want. But the third option, which they kind of ignored until you asked them the question, was they could dismiss it right out by finding that it's frivolous or duplicitous. So the law does require them to have a judicial role here, basically, you know, because it's different. It's somebody sending in a violation, and they should use that judicial role judiciously. And they certainly, before July, were not, because we now hear that 6,000 of these went to DE, went to oath, which is an outrageous number. Now comes this decision of July 30th, whatever. I'm kind of disappointed that DEP, that oath felt. I'm kind of disappointed that Oath felt constrained not to be able to answer any of your questions today, but if you read that appellate decision, they are basically reaching out to DEP and to the council to do something about these thousands of violations. It's their Supreme Court, and it is binding upon their other ALJs, and Max will speak to whether the ALJs are informed about this--
If I ask him. If I ask him to, he will.
Because he has appeared on these violations since then. But this appellate decision is very clear-cut. It gives DEP all the ammunition that it possibly needs. And let me read what we call the holding in the law, where the court says, "Okay, here's the facts, and here's our legal decision." It says, quote, "Where music contributes to the atmosphere of a dining establishment or store and is directed to the patrons or shoppers therein, even though it may also be incidentally heard by passive buyers, an advertising purpose is not established." And that section of the law that these bounty hunters are writing it under is a section that talks about commercial advertising. The old Canal Street hawkers, where they're standing out there with a microphone or a megaphone. That's commercial advertising. Oath is saying here that restaurants, stores, bars that are playing music for the enjoyment of their patrons, even outdoor patrons, because this appeals case, by the way, the speakers were outside, but they were facing their licensed outdoor dining area. Even in that case, Oath is saying, wrong section of the law. So DEP can tomorrow, and should tomorrow, review all the violations that have not been fully adjudicated yet, and there may be thousands of them, all the ones where there were defaults because they could all re-be open, as we heard today, and apply this new standard where the court has made clear that that's not a commercial advertising purpose, and therefore get rid of a whole bunch of these before you guys even pass a law to limit the bounty hunters.
Now, in order to do that, if there are indeed thousands, DEP, although they did bring up the resource question, it's just like, okay, we have to suddenly pour through thousands of them, and how are we supposed to do that? And I, you heard what I said, but--
You said, "Nice try."
Yeah, but there are resources that, in all candor, there are resources that would have to be applied to do that, but as I also said, that they have not only the right, but they have the obligation.
Perhaps--
Just because the workload is a lot is not an excuse for not doing it.
Correct. And once they start dismissing all of these, as Councilman Holden, I think, said, the volume is going to go way down because these guys are owning it for the money. And if they're not going to get the money, then, yes, initially, there may be thousands, but in two months from now, there may be hundreds, and two months after that, there may only be dozens. They'll do something else to make a living. Also, DEP is not completely an innocent bystander here. They got to put in the work, but they're also getting a cut of the action here by not doing the work. And they don't have clean hands.
Well, the city is getting money.
Well, it goes into their monthly report or annual report about fines that have been collected, and this is an easy, cheap way for them to collect fines because they don't have to do any work. They just say, "Okay, you bounty hunter, you prosecute the case." They don't have to put in any of their inspector time, any of their attorney time. Maybe Oath will lend them a couple of ALJs to go through some of these. Also, understand that DEP has a citizen complaint noise form that goes with these citizen complaints, and it is wholly lacking in requiring these citizens to put in sufficient information for DEP to make a determination. It doesn't ask, what is, a simple question, what is the commercial advertising purpose that this noise was complaining about?
Oh, you're saying that the form should properly reflect the section of the code that people are--
And this appellate decision, and there were other court cases going back 20-some-odd years ago which talked about this. If this is all they're looking at, of course, they're passing all of these along because they're not asking enough questions from the bounty hunter.
Do we have that? Do we have that form? Okay. I mean, Sergeant, if you don't mind giving us that. So Sergeant, when they leave the dais, I want that for the record of the committee. And if I could, just to move things along, I'd like to ask Mr. Max Bookman if you have anything to add what Robert had to say.
Yes, and thank you.
You want to speak right into the microphone with the red light on?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Holden, committee staff. My name's Max Bookman. I'm a partner at the law firm, Poszczewski &amp; Bookman, and for the past eight years, I have been representing small businesses before Oath. No small business should have to go through the time and expense of hiring me to defend them at Oath for this type of violation. The abuse of these summonses, it's not delivering justice, it's creating injustice, along with wasted time and money. Chair, you said to DEP you want to decouple the idling violations and the citizen complaints for those from the noise violations. You said, "We have a fire, we have an emergency going on with the noise violations." So what I'd like to do is I'd like to give you a report from the trenches in Oath where I practice, and give you three of the aggressive tactics that these incredibly small number of individuals are using to misuse our city's summons apparatus. One is that they're ignoring Oath precedent. The appeals unit case that we've been talking about today was issued on July 27th. These citizens are still prosecuting these cases, and when you go into the hearing, the virtual hearing room with them, they're not bringing up this appeals decision with the Oath ALJs. You ask, Chair, whether the appeals unit decisions are disseminated to the Oath hearing officers, to the ALJs. Well, they're supposed to be, but we've had many hearings where the Oath hearing officers are unaware of this decision. So our clients are fortunate to have us. We're aware of it. We bring it to their attention, but not everybody has us, and not everybody is hiring a lawyer or a lawyer who knows all this background. And so if the hearing officer doesn't know about the appeals decision, and if the citizen complainant is not bringing up the decision, it's just going unmentioned. So that's a major problem. In state court, there's a duty of candor with the court. You have to be forthright with the court about the legal arguments that you make. There's the same expectation in Oath, and it's not happening there. So that's problem number one. Number two, not only are they ignoring the Oath precedent, but they're issuing multiples of these frivolous violations one day after the next. And I'm glad to hear DEP talking about it because it's really a problem. So just to give a little more color on that, these folks are coming unannounced. They're not, they have no badge to show, but they're not, once they do come unannounced, they're not making themselves known. So they come day after day in secret, recording businesses day after day, issuing summonses day after day. We have one client in Oath who got--
But they don't serve them. They don't serve--
They don't serve them right there.
Right.
No, they hit their video, they go home, and then they submit the complaint form to DEP. So we had one client who got seven of these in a 20-day period and didn't get summons number one in the mail until after, turns out, summons number seven was issued. So it's like, there's a delay here. They come, issue one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and then 20 days later, 30 days later, 60 days later, now in the mail, they get summons number one, and then the next day, number two, three, four, five, six, seven. So what legitimate purpose is this serving? DEP talked about education. There's no legitimate purpose to this. And lastly, the third aggressive tactic that they're using is they're alleging recidivism. And this is so dishonest. Like many of your laws, 24-244B has higher penalties for repeat offenders, which we call recidivists. But you're not a first-time offender until you've been found guilty of something. But it's not so with these folks. When they go on their summons spree, where they're issuing these summonses day after day, when they come on the second day, and every day thereafter, they're alleging recidivist repeat offender fines in their complaints to DEP, which DEP then turns into a summons, or DEP takes no action, the citizen gets to issue the summons. So take my client who got the seven summonses in 20--
Mr. Bookman, I'd like to just jump in here for a second. That's why I'd see who is remaining behind from the administration. Who's here from the administration to hear the good testimony that were? Anybody here from the administration?
That's too bad.
Going once, going twice?
That's a law we should pass. They got to stay to the end of the hearing.
Stay and listen to them. If I could, Andrew, can you call Robert Cataldo and indicate that it is my expectation that the administration has to have somebody in this room to hear this good testimony? Just step outside, give him a call. You got his number?
Yeah.
Okay. Somebody's got to be here really quick, or I'm going to get upset. Please continue.
Thank you, sir. So just to finish the point, so you take my client who got the seven summonses in a 20-day period. By the time that second summons came in the mail, they're already being told that they are a repeat offender, when the first summons they just got yesterday, and it hasn't even been adjudicated yet. And this is particularly insidious with these citizen bounty hunters, because the repeat offender fine, even just to settle it, even just to mail in a violation, saying, "I don't want to hire a lawyer, I don't want to take a day out to do Oath, I'm just going to mail in the fine." Even the mail-in fine is significantly higher for these repeat offender summonses. So at minimum, I don't know why DEP is not policing that. It's not in their form. Are you saying this is a repeat offender? If so, state the date that the summons was previously adjudicated, and provide proof of that. But we need to, it's just another example of these aggressive and dishonest tactics that we--
But Oath is part of this, because they are, they're not disseminating these appeals and the resolutions, and they're levying fines for repeat offenders when there has been no conviction, or whatever you call it, no substantiation. To the extent that you could give us, or not like right now, but prepare something for us that our legal councils can look at, and we would like to make an overture to Oath about your good testimony and about what they're doing, and we want answers from them.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I mean, there does need to be, I think, better education of the judges at Oath. I mean, ultimately--
But we got a handshake, and then you're going to summarize what you're saying, right? Item one, item two--
Oh, yes, and that's what I'm saying. I mean, they ought to be--
That's the right move, to go to Oath, right?
Well, I mean, yes and no. I mean, yes, the right move is to go to Oath.
Well, I mean, you know what? I'll ask my own lawyers that question.
It's a combination of both, but also understand--
But just for my own edification--
Yeah. Like I said, a lot of small businesses, they are overwhelmed with just running their business and trying to make a profit. They're their own HR department. Many of them are immigrants.
Just to follow this by the rules, because there are going to be other witnesses, and they're going to say that I gave a lot of time. So what I'm going to say is, so in answer to my question, you were in the middle of a thought that was of interest to me--
Let me just finish that thought.
And I, what's that?
Let me just finish this thought, right.
I'm just saying that I am asking you to finish your statement. So this is being, everyone, this is being done in response to a question by me. Go ahead.
They get something from the government, and has a fine that you could just mail in. A lot of them just think that's what I'm supposed to do, and I just mail in the fine, even if it's a recidivist fine. They don't even know that sometimes they can go down and defend themselves. And so Oath, when these people get these things in the mail, it has a mail-in fine amount right on it. And so for a lot of people, it's the cost of doing business in New York City, is paying a certain amount of money to city government when you get violations. It's always wrong, but it's especially wrong when it's a citizen bounty hunter and they're getting a recidivist amount. So it's not so easy to say that Oath should not institute the recidivist fine. That's true if you went through full hearing. Then the Oath judge looks and says, "Well, you've never been convicted of anything before."
Oh, I see.
So it's a first-time violation. But a good portion of these, 59% of defaults, another percentage are settlements where the person rescends in the fine, only a small percentage are actually going to a hearing.
I see, I see. Okay. Yeah, we had great collaboration 20 years ago, and let's, I appreciate your advocacy on behalf of thousands of small businesses that are being set upon in a most unjust way, and it is, I as chair in this committee and then the council at large stands for trying to do what we can as soon as possible to right this wrong, and I appreciate your--
Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you for 20 years ago. Thank you for now. Thanks for joining the battle. Councilman Holden, I think together, the two of you each have half of the coin here, which we could solve this problem.
And there's some business owners here, I know, that have been victims of this--
Would love to come testify. Some have to get back to work.
You know what? My colleague Bob Holden has a question for the panel. I recognize Councilmember Holden for questions.
Thank you, Chair. And just, I guess this is for Max, because you mentioned that some businesses were targeted multiple times, and they're repeat offenders. What are we talking about in the way of fines? Like, what kind of nightmare stories do you have of one business absorbing thousands of dollars worth?
I've got one client right now who was here earlier, but had to go back to their business, who is facing right now, because of the total number of these citizen-issue summonses they've gotten, over $12,000 in fines. 50% of that goes to a citizen, so that's just the citizen.
Yeah, and so this is coming on top of the pandemic, where all these, especially, I mean, I had a barber shop that was, he didn't have these little six-foot markers on the floor, and he got hit with thousands of dollars worth of fines. He said, "I only had one customer at a time. I'd make an appointment." And so I never had more than one person in my store, and I had to pay thousands. And we couldn't, again, Oath, they fined them, and we couldn't do anything about it. And this is egregious, particularly egregious, when on top of the pandemic and all the restrictions we had, they're closed, they're shut down, to only operate outside, whatever it was that the business had to put up with, and then they have this now. And that's why I think we have to fix things that are unfair. God knows government's unfair, bureaucracy is unfair many times, and this is why things fall through the cracks. So I thank you for your testimony. I'd like to see even fine-tuning this further, where we give the businesses an even shake here. Again, I have businesses that cause problems in the neighborhood, so we understand that. But they need some kind of measurement, and they need to know when they're breaking the law, and not some subjective and arbitrary person.
Correct. And the last thing I want to say in response to you, I think the most important part of the DEP testimony, which was surprising to me, is they are saying that there is no court, that these places that are getting these bounty hunters are not places that are getting 3-1-1 complaints for noise. So it's one thing if these are trouble locations, problem locations in the neighborhood, with 100 3-1-1 complaints. This is just people, according to their map, they're walking around, wherever they can hear a sound system, they're giving a violation--
No formal complaints.
--even though nobody's complaining about it. It's outrageous.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I want to thank this panel for your advocacy on the part of the business community and your commitment to making, to bring justice to the business community. Appreciate it.
Next, we have David Sheldon with the South Street Seaport Coalition, Kaitlin Mooney with The Independent, and Kathleen Riley Irwin with the New York State Restaurant You may begin when ready.
Okay, I'd just like to ask the witnesses, make sure they state their names for the record, and I have the statement of the New York State Restaurant Association, but in whatever order you wish. No, the witness on my left started, so why don't you start?
Sure. My name is Kaitlin Mooney.
Why don't you bring the mic right in front of you like I have it?
Sure.
Just move the whole thing. Yeah, because it'll help other witnesses, too.
Okay. My name is Kaitlin Mooney. I am the general manager at The Independent in Times Square on 40th Street between 7th and Broadway. We received two noise violations dated back from last September. There's not any residential in our area, it's all commercial. Also, we do not, the ticket stated that we had speakers facing the sidewalks. We do not. We have French doors that have speakers inside where we play music, but not outside, not facing the sidewalk, so it's kind of just a completely false statement. facing the sidewalk, so it's kind of just a completely false statement.
And I'll come back for questions.
Sure.
Is that the extent of your statement?
Yeah.
Okay, right. Brevity is a blessing, so I appreciate that. Please commence.
Good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Riley Erwin, and I'm the New York City Government Affairs Manager for the New York State Restaurant Association. We are also here to testify in strong support of the interest under consideration today to reform the noise ordinance and put an end to the abuse of the civilian complaint system. Under the current law, civilians are empowered and incentivized to issue complaints regarding the noise ordinance, and with no limits in place, you have these career complainants who have abused the system by reporting the same establishments over and over in quick succession, and resulting in sometimes thousands of dollars in fines in restaurant operators. We've received frantic and frustrated calls throughout the summer into the fall. I got one literally today, right before this hearing. He said, "I need to talk to you, we just got a violation. Is this one of these two people who's issuing all the fines?" I said, "Yes. You should fight it, it's obviously bogus." Same exact thing, it said he had speakers facing the sidewalk, he said, "We don't have those speakers." So the abuse of the system has been incentivized up until now by offering civilian complainants up to 50% of the fines collected, if they're the ones who actually bring the claim all the way through oath, with no limits in place on total dollar amount, number of complaints that can be compensated, or any other type of limits. And that creates a situation where these notorious noise enforcers are bragging in the press about making a living off of frivolous complaints. We've already discussed at length the decision in the Appeals Board, and it was also already read for the record. But I also would like to point out a little note that was put in the decision, saying that the board further finds that whether there are patrons or shoppers currently in a dining establishment or store is not a material fact, as such dining establishment or store is not expected to turn on and off music being provided for ambiance as customers enter and leave. So that's one more of the sort of factors that the oath Appeals Board has already put in writing and should be used as precedent. So while those findings are encouraging, and we're glad to hear that the Appeals Board even reversed several past decisions based on the precedent, restaurants should not be dragged before oath and forced to adjudicate their ambiance setting however often these serial complainants would like. The incentive system must be re-engineered so that the noise ordinance is not able to be abused. So Inter 160 would add concrete decibel levels into the definition of unreasonable noise. And importantly, it specifies that Section 24-244 of the Administrative Code, which is the section being abused, shall not apply to music originating from an interior space in connection with the operation of any commercial establishment or enterprise, quoted from the language. So if this legislation is enacted, it would strongly curtail the complaint activity that has been sobered in some restaurants. 1194 would work to revamp the incentives and cap the dollar amount that a civilian can receive for reporting the noise ordinance at either $5 or $10, which is also a much-needed reform to put an end to this current system of abuse and frivolously harassing businesses. Thank you so much for considering our feedback and for bringing these two very important pieces of legislation.
Thank you for coming forward with your good testimony. I certainly wish you well in fighting your thing about the speakers. I urge you to do that. And Kathleen, I salute you in your support of restaurateurs in your capacity with the New York State Restaurant Association. Thank you for your good testimony. I just want to, Sergeant? Sergeant, can I see you for a second? Okay, just call the next panel.
Our next panel will be Michael Jacobs with Corner Table Restaurants, Vanessa Orey with Romantic Depot Queens, and Brittany Mayorga with Romantic Depot. You may begin when ready.
Whoop, you gotta put the microphone on.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Vanessa Orey, and I serve as a general manager of Romantic Depot, a distinctive novelty and lingerie store located in the vibrant neighborhood of Sunnyside, Queens. Our store stands alone at 4702 Queens Boulevard. It's important to understand that our location is unique. We have no neighboring buildings, no upstairs or next-door neighbors. Our storefront faces an eight-lane stretch of Queens Boulevard, bustling with traffic divided by the elevated M train. The nature of our surroundings naturally make it a noisy environment. In 2022, an ordinary white envelope arrived at our store, mysteriously delivered by the U.S. Postal Service. To our surprise, it contained what appeared to be four or five counterfeit summonses. These documents were not issued by a police officer or any authorized city inspector, rather they bore the signature of an individual residing a few blocks away. These summonses incited alleged violations related to music for business or commercial purposes. It's important to clarify that we've never utilized our music for commercial advertising. Our music has always been intended for the enjoyment of our customers and employees. Devoid of promotional content or sales announcements, we have consistently been conscientious about keeping the volume at an appropriate level and avoiding late-night disturbances. Initially, we regarded these tickets as a prank or novelty similar to those available for purchase online to place on someone's car windshield. We even conducted online research to verify whether civilians could indeed issue summonses for noise violations. Surprisingly, there was a complete absence of information confirming the legitimacy of these tickets, especially before media coverage and the involvement of local politicians shed light to the issue. To make matters more baffling, these summonses referred to violations from months earlier. Since we believe summonses were not genuine, we did not respond to them. However, several months later, we received an official notice from the DEP stating that we owe $1,000 due to failure to address the initial summonses. Regrettably, by that point, we have received at least 10 or 15 additional summonses, all bearing the same charges and originating from the same individual. We haven't received physical tickets, it appeared that this individual, Mr. Dietering, has been documenting instances of audible music outside our store and stockpiling them before delivering another wave of violations. Consequently, we find ourselves facing overwhelming sum of $30,000 in fines. I humbly request that you intervene and rectify this glaring injustice.
Thank you, thank you. I'll come back with comments after I hear the next witness.
Hello, good afternoon.
Oh, you gotta turn the light on, the red light, and speak right into the microphone.
Got you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brittany Mayorga, and I serve as a supervisor at Romantic Depot, an establishment conveniently located at the intersection of 47th Street and Queens Boulevard. As stated by my colleague, this section of Queens Boulevard is exceptionally busy, with vehicles and trains passing by around the clock seven days a week. Our business specializes in novelty items and exquisite lingerie, and we are dedicated to creating an enjoyable atmosphere for both our customers and our dedicated staff. Part of that ambiance involves background music. We have always been diligent in ensuring that our music remains at an appropriate volume. It's also worth noting that the sound from our store is genuinely confined to the immediate vicinity, since we are the only people taking up that block. Upon discovering that the tickets were initially believed to be fraudulent, were indeed legitimate, and that a program existed to monetize them through reporting, I was truly astonished. I was even more taken aback when I learned that these citations were not for excessively loud music, but simply for being audible outside our store. It seems improbable that the music we play intended for business and aesthetic purposes could be categorized as a violation of commercial noise regulations. What's most distressing is while this program may have been established with good intentions, is evidently having the opposite effect. When a business exceeds noise levels, common sense dictates that an appropriate authority should issue a warning and offer an opportunity for correction. However, instead of this reasonable approach, it appears that individuals who benefit from issuing these tickets choose to accumulate them and serve multiple citations simultaneously, primarily driven by financial gain. I genuinely appreciate my role and the excellent relationships I share with my coworkers, who like me, are all striving to make better lives in ourselves and our families. We all work hard, and it is deeply unfortunate that a handful of individuals can manipulate a well-intentioned but poorly executed law for their personal gain. I wish to express my gratitude to our local politicians and the Sunnyside Business Improvement District for recognizing this issue. I implore the entire city council to rectify this abusive practice and restore fairness and justice to our community. Thank you.
Well, thank you both for coming forward and bearing witness to the problem that we've been talking about all day. And the more the people that come and testify, you know, the more it, you know, it's one thing to hear me say this, and another thing to hear people that are really affected by it. And so I appreciate you coming forward today with regard to the witness to my right about me, you know, intervening because your fines are, you know, under adjudication. I have no, I have no authority to do that. But I would urge you to fight them. And it would be, throat lousing, talking all day, scratchy voice. Would be my view to try, and once we get the bills passed into law, all those summonses that have not been adjudicated, if, no, the ones that have been adjudicated, there's nothing anybody can do.
Yeah.
But we do intend to move quickly, and to the extent that we can have the violations that have been written but not yet adjudicated, you know, go away, that's a legal question. That would be my intention to do that. I wanna thank you for coming forward, and I appreciate you, your patience of being here at this time, this, this whole hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Andrew, can I see you for a second? Yes, please.
The next panel will be Joel Kufferman from the Environmental Justice Initiative, John Conroy from Mustang Harry's, and Teresa Sigler from Pigs and Whistle.
Hi there. My name is Teresa Sigler, and I represent the Pig and Whistle Group. I am the manager over there. This past February, we received a ticket in the mail, like all the others have said, you know, from a very dodgy-looking envelope, not a city agency. We immediately turned off our outdoor speakers, which we did have on for the ambience of our outdoor diners, because they were the only ones that we had during COVID. So the speakers were turned on at that point for that. And quite frankly, we just forgot to turn them off. Rockefeller Center is a very noisy neighborhood. You could barely hear our speakers, but as soon as we did, we adhered to the law. Couple of weeks later, we got another seven tickets, all predated from the previous August, Christmas, what have you. We have had two oath hearings. The problem with the oath hearing for us is, we had requested to appear in person. Like, I wanted to look that person in the eye who was writing these tickets, but they're not allowed. It's by telephone only. So that's one issue we have. It allows the bounty hunters to, you know, call in from home, call in from their office, call in from, even if they're out of the country. Oath have sent us tickets that we have never even received. The person from oath today said that it's 75 days, it's not, it's 30. And there are businesses who have not received either the ticket or the hearing, and this states right here that the city will get a legal judgment if a new hearing is not requested or the 1,750 paid within 30 days. So that's also another issue that the businesses are dealing with. This gentleman here asked, well, you know, what would the defense be? Yes, the defense absolutely is, "I was unaware, I did not know, I immediately ceased operation." The first DEP inspector that we had on site was after we had received five tickets. And I have been at that location for 10 years, and in 10 years, we have never received a single noise violation. So yes, that is what have been my defense. Okay, and those are my comments.
Thank you.
Everything else, everybody has already said, so I would not like to waste the time.
Thank, and I also understand, we have about 40 witnesses on Zoom, and so, you know, brevity, as I said, is a blessing. I thank you for that, and thank you for bearing witness to the problem.
Sure.
Joel.
Good afternoon, thank you. A little upset that this all is talk about protection of the small business people and abuse of environmental law. I am here partly to defend the citizen suit provision in general, and here in particular. DEP has a bad record of enforcement. They have a bad record of enforcement, there's also, there's no coordination with Department of Buildings and other city agencies. As an environmental lawyer that has been dealing with noise complaints, air pollution complaints, environmental complaints, city enforcement is basically non-existent. Okay? That's the tenet that's out there. I'm here partly not to protect the restaurant owners, but all the other thousands and hundreds of thousands of people that are suffering from lack of air enforcement by DEP. I'm here to protect the DEP enforcement people who are sent out to brownfield sites...
We're not talking about brownfields, and just please limit it to noise. We're talking about noise.
Okay, I'm limiting it to noise. Many, many construction sites, we've called up DEP, we've asked them to send down inspectors, they tell us they don't have the time to do it, and the people in DEP have told us that it doesn't make that much of a difference, because they're only gonna introduce a small fine that doesn't get collected. So I think it's, without the outside goading, without these private or public citizens, we wouldn't be having this hearing in a way, and non-enforcement would be continuing. The city's owed $2 billion in uncollected fines. So without this outside pressure in different ways, this, we're not being protected. The other thing about noise protection, what you're asking is unequal enforcement. When NYCHA residents call 311 to complain about noise, they're told they have to go back to NYCHA. So we have definitely, Mr. Gennaro, you should look at the unequal enforcement of the city, especially in terms of noise enforcement, okay? But also, you can't have a bill of attainder, you can't do a bill undoing past complaints, that's unconstitutional. That's called a bill of attainder, all right? So I just wanna, I think it's, it's a little stacked here that there might be, without going into the details...
Please conclude.
Excuse me?
Please conclude.
Conclude?
Yeah.
Well, I think one of the things I'm gonna ask, if you're so concerned about restaurant owners and small businesses, which you're expressing here, I think the city council should look at, at commercial rent control, is one way to...
That's another topic that's out of order for this hearing.
In terms of noise, that you have to look at, that DEP does not have injunctive relief when there's a serious noise violation that's going on at a construction site, they can't stop that construction going on. We've dealt with cases where there should be more enforcement...
Joel, your testimony is not relevant to the hearing.
Okay. You gave the other people more than two minutes, Mr. Gennaro.
I'm just saying that...
More than two minutes, all right? And I think it's really unfair that you allow three people to speak for like 10, 12 minutes, and you don't let...
That is the discretion of the chair, and you're off-topic.
I'm asking...
You're not asking anything.
Okay.
I get, I'm just saying that you are, you're off-topic, we have 40 more witnesses...
Okay, I'm getting back on, I'm back on topic.
Next panel, next panel, your time, your time has expired. Next panel.
But the enforcement...
Next panel.
But let me just...
I'm calling the next panel.
Okay.
Sergeant, turn off the microphone, next panel.
The next panel will be Liam McEnaffey, I apologize if I mispronounced your name, with Juniors, Mark Fox with Fox Lifestyle Hospitality Group, and Clint Smeltzer with Manhattan Community Board 3.
And while that panel gets itself together, I have to take a two-minute break. I'll be right back.
Hello.
Hello.
Clint Smeltzer.
Okay.
Community Board Three.
Okay.
Okay, I'm back. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, please turn on your microphone and speak right into it.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Councilperson Gennaro and the rest of the committee. My name is Liam Melenaffey. You did a great job. I represent Juniors Cheesecake. And they have been subject to, I would love to tell you how many summonses they have. What I can tell you is that right now, I'm representing them on a total of 13 summonses, which I beat out Mr. Bookman by a couple of thousand dollars. We now have somewhere around $16,000 worth of outstanding summonses that we hope to have adjudicated in one felt swoop sometime next year. I say I can't tell you because we have just gotten two new ones that allege violations back in October of last year. So we have every reason to believe that we're a very juicy target and that we may be subject to more coming down the pipe. I won't reiterate, I won't go over, the work you've done here is amazing. I'm very impressed by today's hearing and by the testimony that's taken place so far.
Thank you.
It is clear that this type of enforcement is not germane to quality, to the quality of life in New York City. Juniors Cheesecake has been here for 73 years, has been in the Times Square area for 20 years, and they've received a grand total of zero noise complaints, aside from these most recent summonses. I can tell you that I have represented a smaller business. A friend of mine has a bodega. He would have never been able to hire a lawyer. And we had a hearing back in May, so as a report from the trenches, it was, it resembled a Karen Guru court to the extent that the administrative law judge in question felt as though they had no discretion whatsoever to mitigate any fine based on remediation. We've heard that.
Right.
He also felt as though, once it was audible from the street-
Yeah, that's you.
Okay. Once it was audible from the street, it was completely irrelevant. I'm a former administrative law judge myself. Discretion was the stock and trade of our business. I would urge you to do one thing if you're going to pass, if you're successful, which I hope that you are, is considering making it retroactive. Contrary to what Mr. Kaufman said, that would not be an ex post facto law. That would merely be applying the same justice-
I know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Clint Smeltzer and I'm here representing Community Board Three Manhattan, Chair of their State Liquor Authority Licensing Committee. Our board hasn't voted on this legislation, it's just been a discussion. We're mainly concerned about Intro 160 and that the changes would have a negative impact on our board specifically. We've had the highest number of commercial noise complaints in Manhattan and the second in the city total. Our complaints, our noise complaints have increased significantly since 2019. I think it's a 74% increase from 2023, 2019. Our area is densely residential, but there's also a lot of non-conforming businesses on the side streets, both nightlife businesses and other businesses. Our job is to make sure the businesses and residents can peacefully coexist. The protections that keep the noise from businesses inside the business and not spilling into the streets or nearby apartments and allow people to sleep also allow different types of businesses to coexist right next to each other. Without these protections, we're putting the residences, sorry, residences and businesses unnecessarily in conflict with each other. Many of our businesses are located in tenement buildings, which are almost impossible to soundproof, so therefore, the sound emanating from there becomes a huge problem for the residences above. Basically, that's it. We were just asking that the protections that have been put in place years ago must be maintained and enforced in order to have this balance between residents and businesses, and that you keep the existing legislation and the existing language of the legislation in regards to the decibel levels and readings of sound emanating from inside of a business.
Thank you. And certainly, we are going to, you know, work with the hostess stakeholders, both on Intro 160 and mine and Keith Powers' bills. And I make sure you touch base with, well, if you were notified of this hearing, then, you know, you're in our orbit. And we'll make sure that we stay in touch as these bills, all of them, roll down the tracks. Thank you very much for participating today. And as the next panel is called, I have to, I have to take a special eye drop and I just, I'll just take a second.
Do you call the next panel?
Yeah, call the panel.
The next panel will be Lisa Rose Marek with Nederlander Organization, Robert Camacho with Bushwick, Bushwick Alliance, I think, and Yoav Errez.
Okay, forgive me, I just have to. It's one of these things I got to do it every two hours. It's just an eye drop, but it's like fancy. I have to fill the little dropper. It's got to be refrigerated. It's like a whole thing, you know?
You may begin when ready.
That's it. Done. Thank you for your indulgence.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Rose Marek. I'm the Director of Facilities for the Nederlander Organization, a well-established and respected business in Broadway theater and the entertainment industry. I'm here to share our experiences and concerns regarding the enforcement of the ordinances under review and the impact they've had on our organization. Since 1965, a family owned and operated Nederlander organization has been a proud contributor to the vibrant cultural landscape of New York City. We offer premier Broadway entertainment experiences to our audiences and are strong supporters of our local economy. Recently, our business has been negatively impacted by a series of sound-related violations that we believe require a more balanced and equitable approach to enforcement. To date, our organization has received, as of yesterday or last week, a total of 28 violations related to speakers mounted underneath our marquees directly attached to our theaters, the majority of which were issued during the summer and fall of 2022. What is particularly troubling is that these violations were issued without any prior warnings or notifications. It is our belief that a fair and just system should provide businesses with the opportunity to rectify violations through education and corrective actions rather than resorting to immediate punitive measures. In our 58 years of business in Times Square Theater District, we have never received a citizen's complaint regarding noise from our theaters until a bounty was placed upon businesses with no restrictions. There is zero evidence that back, that low-level sound coming from theater marquees is disruptive to Times Square. Moreover, in commercial areas such as Times Square, there is no expectation of quietness, and these citizens have chosen to target the theaters as a source of revenue by traveling to this area to issue violations. Additionally, to the clarifications proposed accompanying the violations, citizens should be required to also submit noise level readings. This has been common practice by the DEP to confirm that there really is a violation. The fact that these citizens have found a loophole where they must only show that there was an audible noise is against public policy and the spirit of the law. The videos submitted are often in areas of midtown where the ambient noise levels are much higher than other areas of the city, and this is not considered when reviewing the hearing. Furthermore, there should be measures taken to establish-
Please conclude. I'm sorry.
Okay. We'd like to point out, in our experience, the citizens and complainers held on to a stack of summonses for a significant amount of time before mailing them via first-class mail, and several tickets were lost in the mail and never received. We were made aware of the violations after they went into default. So we do support the bills with the additional clarifications, and thank you.
Thank you very much for your views and your patience. Yes, Ms. Renaro.
Hi. My name is Yoav Errez, and I'm here because I'm a concerned citizen, sick of being the victim of illegal, unregulated noise from businesses. It has never before been easier to buy a powerful speaker which is causing a noise pandemic in the city. I literally cannot walk one block without someone trying to force their DJ skills on my unwilling ears. Restaurants should not be allowed to pollute the public space with their music. It cannot be more clear to any reasonable person that the intention of the law when referring to advertising is any sound heard outside of a business, even if it's just music. It doesn't matter how loud it is. Literally 100 feet from here, there are food carts and street merchants who blast music out to public most days and nights, and even after hundreds of 3-1-1 calls, they continue to make City Hall into an open-air disco without any interruptions. The reality is that there is currently zero noise regulation enforcement in the city. Calls to 311 get a visit from the police sometimes, and only up to eight hours later, when the problem is often gone. Even in cases where the crime is obvious and the police are there on time, they will never issue a fine or confiscate a speaker. All they do is give a meaningless warning and leave, and the issue continues once they are gone. Yes, there is a small number of people taking advantage of the citizens complaint program right now because it is not advertised anywhere. New Yorkers aren't even aware it exists, and it takes hours of work, months of waiting around and hoping and praying that the DEP will sometimes reply to your emails. We are on a mission to protect New Yorkers and their ears, and we should be compensated for it. Because noise pollution is considered a smaller crime that is easier for most people to ignore, who you'll end up hearing from today are businesses who, instead of simply turning their music off, will continue to advertise illegally with complete disregard for peaceful, quiet, respectful New Yorkers who live in their areas, because most New Yorkers are non-confrontational and don't even know that this hearing is taking place or that they have this option. Even if they did know, you wouldn't hear from them because all you hear from is squeaky wheels that are losing money.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi. How are you? My name is Robert Camacho. I live in the hood of Bushwick. When nobody wanted to be there, all of a sudden, everybody wants to come there and be like Christopher Columbus syndrome and throw the natives out. I'm talking about that. Intro 0160, the noise code, music organizing from interior space, space like restaurants, bars, and now we got the weed shops. Don't forget about that. Intro 1194 would cap the fines of noise violations from $5, which was reported, if you reported to Department of Environment to Protection, to $10 if you, if it was reported by a citizen who was sick and tired of being assaulted by the noise for profit coming from neighborhoods like mines and businesses like theirs. Sound bar. It sounds, it gets worse. The LU 001222 adopted by the Resolution 53, passed by City Council 2020, allow restaurants to keep their facility open at all times they are operating. Local law 121 passed by City Council in August mandates restaurants, bars must be allowed to operate from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., indoor and outdoor, even if it's a residential neighborhood. Put it all together. Under these combined four laws, restaurants can keep their doors open 14 hours a day, blast music in the streets and in homes by nearby residents with no fear of a fine that costs of a sandwich, which is absolutely not true. I'm going to change the sandwich routine because we had a community space that was giving to community because they don't have no more CBOs. A private entity got rid of the CBO and did a restaurant, a supermarket. Very well, we need supermarkets. So I went in there and I went to buy a sandwich. And do you know I paid $14.50 for a sandwich, only with cheese, lettuce, and tomatoes? More than that, these people would pay for a fine. Please.
Please conclude.
We got to stop this. You got to listen to the community. I know I had both of my council people here, Jennifer Gutierrez and Sandy Nurse, and we will be blasting it because we're dying. Our seniors and our kids can't live on top of these stores and the covert. Our kids got to study seven days a week.
Time has expired. I have a comment.
Thank you. God bless you and I appreciate you.
No, so, but-
Take care of yourself because you don't sound too good.
I've got, no, I've got something to, to add, is that, you know, the individual civilian, you know, sometimes feels a little helpless, they call 311 or whatever. And this is why, you know, you not only have your local council member, because you go to the council member and, you know, you go to he or she and then indicate, you know, that you've got a problem, there's also the local community board. You know, we do have these, you know, council members have the ability to get local problems addressed. And that's like a large part of what we do. And there's 311 and there's like members of the council. And so, you know, most council members are better than 311 at getting, you know, situations remedied. And that's what I do, and I think I speak on behalf of, you know, the other 50 council members here, that we hear specific situations, we do our best, you know, to try to, you know, give, give people the, you know, peace and repose that they need and to address whatever problem they have. And so, we try to fill in where, you know, 311 leaves off.
I've never felt more helpless than until I came across how one side of-
Okay. But I just had, I, I, I just wanted to have that as a, as a parting comment, and I appreciate this panel being here with us today. Thank you very much.
And I thank you, and that citizen thing needs to be fixed too. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next panel will be Sandra Tellanchana. Again, I apologize, I pronounced your name wrong, with Flowers by Georgie, Nikolay Geregov with Pando39, and Frank McCauley with Tino McMurphy's.
Why don't we go from, from my right to my left? How about that? We'll start with you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandra Tellanchana. I stand before you today as the voice of Flowers by Georgie, a small family-owned flower shop nestled in the heart of Sunnyside, Queens. Our, our shop has been marred by an unpleasant encounter with Mr. Dieter, Deep Mar Dietering, who in conjunction with the DEP unjustly slapped us with three unwarranted tickets. Two of these tickets found themselves in the favor of Mr. Dietering. Each carrying the weight of an $880 fine, adding up to staggering $1,760. Our luck ran out when these so-called bounty hunters were instructed to document violations themselves. The second ticket handed out by the DEP cited unreasonable noise from the sound reproduction device for commercial and business advertising purposes on November 28, 2022, at 8:12 a.m. This was despite the fact that our doors remained open and the music emanating from our shop was meant to create a pleasant atmosphere inside, not to disturb our neighbors. However, the DEP argues that even if you stand at our front door with the doors open and can hear music from there, it qualifies as a violation. This interpretation left us perplexed. The third ticket further deepened our confusion, claiming that speakers outside our store were playing music to attract attention. We promptly removed those speakers, which were remnants from the previous tenant that were not even connected to our music system. During the hearing, when we explained this, we were asked if we had evidence from a sound technician proving those speakers in activity. For a small business like ours, it's financially impractical to allocate funds for a sound technician, especially when money is already in short supply. Our flower shop is not just a business, it's our livelihood and the legacy of our family. It has sustained us, put food on our table, provided shelter, put my siblings and I through school- school, and now my youngest sibling. Witnessing individuals misuse our power to levy hefty fines on hard-working families like ours is disheartening. My parents tirelessly dedicate 60 to 80 hours each week to make and meet, pay monthly rent, cover utility bills, and restart our store with merchandise. The pandemic left countless small businesses reeling, and now we find ourselves under the relentless scrutiny of city agencies. So as you deliberate the purpose of bills to curtail the exploitation of small businesses by bounty hunters through unjust violations, we implore you to contemplate the impact of these actions on families like ours. Your support could be the lifeline that ensures businesses like Flowers by Georgie's continue to flourish. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm just gonna jump in for a second, even though ordinarily I wait till the panel is done, but now, the person, the entity that you're talking about, or the individual who heard sound outside your business, was this someone from D E P?
No, the individual-
It was a bounty hunter guy?
It's a bounty hunter guy.
Okay, fine, fine, I just want to make sure that, because, you know, D E P would know in that situation that they have to use a decibel meter, and so-
They did, and on the second ticket that was issued, and I had the hearing with D E P, that's what, I raised all the flags during their-
Right, okay, no, this is, this is part of the whole bounty hunter phenomenon, and why we're doing everything we can to try to, and we're moving on this, but thank you, let me go to the next ones.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nikolay Gergov, and I represent Pando39. We've received 16 summons from the same individual, well, one of them was from someone else, but 15 from the same individual, but we took the business asses, and there was a small speaker right above the front door, which we took down the moment we received the first summon, but this time, the summons kept coming, and as you're already aware, there's a huge disconnect somewhere, because most of the summons were issued in the two weeks of this February, and we received them sometime in the beginning of May, and then we received summons that were from last November as well, and December. If we are to pay the total fine of all 16 summons, that's over $20,000.
You should fight those.
Yeah.
You should fight those. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Frank McCauley, I'm a partner in Tito Murphy's on 46th Street, right on Restaurant Row. Our business is primarily a restaurant with a bar. We have an area of about 300 square feet outside with two speakers that are kept as background music. They are not facing the street, even though we have outside dining. We were summoned eight times by the same individuals, by the same bounty hunter. It just keeps coming back and coming back and coming back. Until we got our first summons, we had no idea this was going on. We got no warning, we just had no clue, so I think it's very unfair, and I think we're low-hanging fruit, and we're being exploited.
Correct, that's what's going on, and that's what we're here to fix, and, you know, notice that Councilmember Holden, who, you know, is hanging in with us this late in the hearing, and, you know, Bob and I, well, you know, Councilmember Holden and I are very committed to making sure that, that people aren't abused by, you know, people who self-empower on a 50-year-old unknown law, and that's what we're here to fix, and so bear with us as we get through this. In the meantime, anything that comes your way, you should fight.
Thank you.
I thank this panel, I direct council call the next panel.
The next panel will be A.M. Ritchitelli with the East 17th Street Loft Corporation Co-op, Gregory Gearing with Acoustics, Inc., and Norma Coate.
While we're here, I just wonder if anyone from the administration has made their way into the room? Okay, thank you for being here. Please tell the city, the city Lettuce Letter Affairs that we need someone from the administration to hear every single word of testimony, that these good people have waited around hours to deliver, and they're not getting paid to be here, so it's the least that we can expect for someone from the mayoralty, someone from the administration, to listen to the citizens, and as further impetus to work with the council to get this fixed, but I thank you for being here. Okay, please commence when you're ready. How about you? You have to turn on the microphone, red light on.
Okay. My name is Norma Coate, I live directly over a restaurant. It's a residential building, it's a residential block, it's a residential street, there are no other commercial establishments on that block or at that intersection. That restaurant plays its music in its dining room. I don't hear it through the floor, because they have sound protection equipment, but there's no way you can introduce sound protection out of doors, and if this restaurant should choose to play its music loud enough that it penetrates into the outdoor space, it will not only harm me, but it will harm everyone else who lives around that neighborhood. I think it is not fair to ask the residents to endure the destruction of their peace and quiet in order to support a private profit-making enterprise. Music is a kind of air pollution. It's no answer to say, well, we'll just, we'll just regulate it at night. I am at home a lot, I work at my computer a lot, it's just as destructive of my life in the daytime as it is at night. In order to have any enforcement at all of this, since the city agencies will never be able to do it, you have to preserve effective citizen complaints. I say whatever problems you have with people who are abusing it, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Keep effective civilian complaints, which have to be underlaid by effective penalties placed on violators. Violators can't say, well, my music is just background music. If it were just background, it wouldn't be out in the street, and those people need to be reined in. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, thank you, and I do agree with you.
My name is Greg Guarino, I'm from Acoustolog Incorporated, we measure noise. We agree that 24244 clearly should not be used to penalize accidental sound leakage, but Intro 160 will have unintended consequences due to its use of the wrong measurement technique, D B A. The current noise code includes the phrase "shall include but shall not be limited to" before specifying three very limited examples, B1, 2, and 3. By removing that phrase, Intro 160 will allow businesses to disturb both businesses and residential neighbors by only requiring them to conform to those three limited examples. I understand my councilmen's wish for an objective standard, but all three examples only use D B A. D B A ignores the bass, and as everyone knows, bass is the problem. Bass is what comes through floors, walls, windows, et cetera. Right now, a business can at least use 24218 to complain about bass from another business. If the code has changed, that bass leakage will no longer be a violation. Right now, the Commercial Music Section, 24231, protects residents from some bass frequencies, but not the sub-bass from subwoofers. The proposed change would allow businesses to produce unlimited sub-bass, disturbing everyone around them, indoors and outdoors. If you live near a loud business, a gym, club, restaurant, or even a clothing store, you will not be able to complain about sub-bass coming through the wall or floor, and if you work next to one, you won't be able to complain at all, because D B A does not properly measure the bass that you hear. If you remember nothing else about what I'm saying, remember that there are many ways to measure many different kinds of decibel measurements. D B A ignores the bass, and bass is the problem.
I thank you, I'd be very grateful if you could provide a copy of your written statement to the committee council, or, you know-
Our consultant, Alan Feierstein, who would be here if he wasn't 10,000 miles away, is going to submit something more comprehensive.
Please do, because we want to get all of the technical subtle nuances correct.
Exactly right, that's what we're asking.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
And it is very compelling testimony, and we really appreciate you coming forward and make sure we get that.
Chair, can I-
Oh, I recognize Councilmember Holden.
Again, I thank you for that, because I don't know some of these things, and we need the experts, that's why we have hearings, so I don't like the bass either, and I think that's the most annoying, so I agree with you, so this is very, very good information. If we could adjust it, we will.
Thank you very much, we'd be more than happy to provide you with the information, and this is what we suspected, that we've been hearing a lot of words like decibel go around, and there's different kinds of decibels, and there's, you talk about objective measurements, but there are different kinds of objective measurements. This just isn't the right one for this problem.
So we could tweak the bill, right?
Right.
With the language that would cover the bass, I'd appreciate that, because I don't want to create another problem by solving one problem we created another. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and if it matters, I live in Glendale.
Thank you, thanks for that.
Thank you.
The next panel will be Peter Gibson, Robin Warren, and Murphy Fitzpatrick. You may begin when ready.
If you could, if you'll hold on one second until I'm ready to listen. Sorry about that, I just wanted to be focused on your testimony.
Okay, my name's Peter Gibson, I am a concerned citizen, and I wanted to say that I have concerns about the Bill 0160 that would completely exempt any penalty for noise operating from an interior space in a business. It seems to me that the passing this law would mean any business can now play music as loud as they want without any deterrence. Going forward, these laws would allow for business operator, a business operator that was previously considered a bad actor by their community board to play music without installing soundproofing or blast music directly into the street, as long as the speakers were in an open window inside. These amendments would increase harmful noise in the residential neighborhoods that we're already experiencing. These laws might make it easier for a business to operate, but would vastly, unproportionately, at a vastly, unproportionately higher cost to the residents and the quality of life and health of those residents. As you know, 3-1-1 database indicates that noise is the most common complaint in New York. New York City Department of Health reports that 40% of New Yorkers report disruptive noise in, at home in the past three months. About 30% of New Yorkers with serious psychological distress report frequent noise disruption. The New York Department of Health also reports that common effects of noise is hypertension, diabetes, anxiety, increased risk of heart attacks. It seems that amending these laws would negatively impact the quality of life of many of your constituents. To produce the overall, greater good and balance for New York City, businesses and residents, and for businesses and residents, that we urge you to change these amendments. So the citizen-
Please conclude.
Okay, the citizen-initiated noise summons program should be improved. I agree that meter evidence should be submitted, the business operator should be sent a copy of the proposed summons immediately. If the citizen submitting a proposed summon does not live in the neighborhood-
Please conclude.
He should have several residents that reside in the immediate neighborhood co-sponsor the summons, but keep the effective citizen complaint program in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Murphy Fitzpatrick, I am a manager at a restaurant called Bardot on Restaurant Row on West 46th Street, and I think I can one-up everyone where I have 18 violations from the same person, and I actually have residential neighbors above and directly adjacent to my establishment, and I've never received a 3-1-1 call from many of them, and I'm friendly with many of them, because when these violations started coming in, I asked all of them that they could always text me, let me know if they had issues, and because I'm a smaller establishment as well, and where I'm located close to Times Square, where my rent is high and my square footage is low, that my violations total almost between three and four months of my rent, which, if all of these hit my bank, would probably put me out of business. So this is something for me, and I totally understand everyone else's, who are on the side as well, those people who are abusing the noise, that for myself, who's not one of them, that I would like for there to be some sort of justification that we can get through, and again, that people that do abuse it, yes, there should be some penalty, but for 18 violations from one person, from one location, that really has no problems with any of their adjacent neighbors, doesn't really seem fair.
Thank you, and I will say that before the, before this section was uncovered, that the bounty hunters were using, you know, life went on with the new noise code for 20 years, and we were using the decibel standard, so any declaration that any witness would make that they're under no obligation whatsoever to limit their noise, you know, there was a paradigm in place that was just blown up when the bounty hunters got into business, and so I just, I just felt it was important to make that point, that, you know, people were getting, you know, decibel meter violations, this was happening, it's not like, you know, the bounty hunter shot up, and then, you know, now and only, and only since their arrival is there any kind of noise enforcement, that's just, that's not the case. We need to do better, we need to do better, you know, civilian enforcement, we need to do better on all frontiers, but what we don't need is, you know, profiteers running around who do not have your best interests at heart, they just want to make a lot of money, but, and any problem that you're having, and any problem that you're having-
Speculation.
I would urge you to, you know, engage with your council member, your local community board, and make yourself, that's where you turn up the volume, to them.
Yeah, we're doing that, and, you know, that's your speculation, that this person's doing it for profit, and that's it.
I don't think that's speculation, but we will agree to disagree, and we're calling the next panel. Thank you.
The next panel will be Sharon Trainer and Cormac Flynn.
Cormac, Cormac and I go back a long time. Is that the League of Constitution Voters Days or something, or something like that?
I was there a long time.
Yeah, right.
Before that.
You gotta put on your microphone, yeah.
Well, I was there a long time, but before that, former Speaker Valone.
Oh, right, 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 yeah. Please.
Hi, my name is Sharon Trainer, and I am representing eight bars and restaurants in Manhattan. Jack Dempsey's, The Playwright Irish Pub, The Playwright Tavern, McKale's, Bardot, Legends, Tito Murphy's, and St. Pat's. I am testifying as how it is unfair that civilians can write up their own noise violations and get paid for it, creating bounty hunters, and I feel like bars and restaurants are being targeted. I am also testifying that the rules are unclear, as it states unreasonable noise from sound reproduction device for commercial and business advertising purposes. Meanwhile, businesses are not advertising, but simply creating a nice ambiance for their customers. As I mentioned before, our eight locations have received over 87 violations. We started receiving them in the mail of March 2023, for dates occurring as far back as August 2022. This was the first time we had received any sort of noise violations, and as soon as we received the first one, we actually took down our speakers. The problem did not stop there, we began to receive them week after week in the mail, some dated two days apart, some dated a week apart, all ranging from August 22 to March 22. dated a week apart, all ranging from August 22 to March 23. So these violations were being held for over six months before being sent out. As a matter of fact, I'm still receiving them from dates in October 22, 5th, and 7th, but they are only being mailed out September 27th of this year, nearly a whole year later. I believe this is an attempt to rack up as many offenses as possible in order for maximum penalty payouts. Nobody has come to actually give us a violation in person. Some of these violations have gone into default, 59%, as we established, because we never actually received them and only found out about them when we got a default letter. Some of our managers have even witnessed the bounty hunters going right up to the speakers to video them. May I add, there is two individuals in particular responsible for 95% of these--
Yeah, we know. We know that.
Yeah, okay. Can I continue?
Very briefly, because, very briefly. It's getting late. Scores of witnesses still to testify.
What is the point in paying for outdoor seating permits and music royalties if we can't even give our customers the same ambiance as inside? They'd rather listen to music than honking horns and sirens. I feel the need to testify today because I'm generally worried about how we are supposed to pay all these fines if they are sustained. We also have to pay legal representation. Some businesses will not survive this. We are still recovering from the repercussions of COVID, and we never got back to where we were before then. This is just creating more stress for us. May I suggest that civilians do not get paid for reporting noise complaints, and if they do file complaints, that they be filed within 30 days of it actually occurring. I'm also suggesting that all the rest of the noise violations be dismissed. We weren't given the chance to cure them in the first place. Had we done that, we wouldn't have racked them up.
This is, yeah, I, the ones that are already in the pipeline, we'll do what we can. Anything that has been adjudicated, it's out of our hands, but, you know, we're trying to work as quickly as possible to get the best result as soon as possible and to have those that have not yet been adjudicated thrown out. Thank you. I'm gonna move on to Cormac now. You bet.
Appreciate it.
Sure. Cormac.
Hello. My name's Cormac Flynn, and like Cliff said before, from Community Board 3, I'm on Community Board 2. We also haven't taken a position yet because our community's really just learning about these bills in the last few days. However, for background, I'm a member of Community Board 2 for 12, 15 years, on the SLA, former SLA Chair. I'm also the former head of my block association from the residential side, and I've been for over 10 years on the board of the Village Alliance, the Business Improvement District, working to fill empty storefronts and that sort of thing. So I actually know the noise issues from every which side on this thing. Let me just say that I do not, and no one I know, has any objection to the main legislative purpose that you seem to be pursuing here, which is to stop monetization abuse of a complaint mechanism for the noise code. However, we have very large concerns about Intro 160. And most of those concerns, it turns out, were just addressed a few minutes ago by that gentleman from, is it Acoustolog? Who came up. They are specifically about the base, that if you strip out the language that says, you know, including but not limited to, and you just leave these three 20-year-old examples, those examples are all A-weighted, right, and not C-weighted. And so you end up leaving out bass and sub-bass from any kind of mechanism. And this is important because, as you said, Mr. Chairman, it's 20 years ago, the noise revisions were made, and I remember because I testified a few times on that. In those 20 years, technology around bass, around woofers and sub-woofers have just changed dramatically, and now you can get that kind of sound when you didn't able to.
Thank you. Thank you, Cormac. And certainly, you know, the points were made about the bass, and we will duly consider it. We don't want to go backwards, and we're trying to go forwards.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Andrew, if I could just see you for a second? And you call the next panel.
The next panel will be Jonathan Rinaldi and Raul Rivera.
It's on? Great. Good morning, Chair. I have some material showing how you, Janelle, are taking significant bribes from Kathy or Kathleen, wife of registered lobbyist Robert Bookman, in exchange for you introducing 1194. Kathleen is married to Robert. I have emails--
Your testimony is out of order.
I've had emails between the both of you, but Intro 1194 is something that has no sponsors. It's just your bill. And which not-for-profits do you actually support?
We don't answer questions. You get to testify, you don't get to ask questions.
Right. Well, I'm just letting you know that I have evidence that you are taking bribes for your bills that you're introducing. Plus, you really don't care about the community because you filled--
Okay, Sergeant, shut up the microphone. You're out of order. You're off-topic. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Good afternoon. My name is Raul Rivera. I'm a TLC driver and a TLC driver advocate. It's been brought to our attention, I mean, you want to censor people, you don't want to let people speak, not even for two minutes. I don't know how that works. But we're here at your committee because we are New Yorkers and we are concerned--
If you're gonna speak on topic, speak on topic. You're gonna speak on, if you're gonna go off-topic, then you're not gonna be allowed to testify.
We're not going off-topic. We're speaking about you and your committee. And these--
Hold on a second. I am not the topic.
I'm asking you to hold on a second. We're speaking about these bills, and you're--
No, you're not. You're not.
You're cutting, you're cutting us off.
You're not--
We have two minutes to speak, sir.
No, you get to, you get two minutes to speak on topic.
It's censorship.
On topic.
It's censorship. You're cutting us off.
You're off-topic. Sergeants--
That you stand down and let us testify.
Sergeants. Call the next panel. Call the next panel. Call the next panel. Call the next panel. I ask the sergeants to clear these individuals out of the room.
We will now turn to Zoom testimony. For panelists who are testifying-- We will now turn to Zoom testimony. When your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. We will return to in-person testimony after we finish the Zoom testimony. Yes. We will be doing the in-person testimony and then the Zoom testimony. I would now like to welcome Eric Eisenberg to testify.
Hi. First, thank you to Keith Powers for your strong bills. Now on to the bad ones, which are Intros 1194 and 160. In the early 1970s, New Yorkers realized that city agencies, namely the NYPD and the DEP, were failing to enforce our noise laws. They knew that chronic noise is not a mere nuisance, but also harms our sleep, our health, our learning, and even our lifespans. So City Council, in the 1972 noise code, enabled and monetarily encouraged members of the public to also enforce our noise laws against businesses that purposely direct their advertising noise to the public sidewalk. Unfortunately, in 50 years, the DEP never explained to the public how they could participate. In 2022, the public, sick and tired of the city's non-enforcement, read the noise code and again insisted that, yes, they did have a right to fight for a healthy soundscape in New York City. Oath has treated businesses more than fairly at noise hearings. 80% of citizen-based noise summonses result in an inviolation finding, much higher than the 49% of the NYPD oath summonses. Nonetheless, oath has very generously issued $0 fines when the businesses stop their noise pollution by the time of the hearing. That's unprecedented. And where the businesses have an alternate explanation for the music, like outdoor dining, oath has been dismissing the tickets. Only persistent and entirely unnecessary noise polluters have anything to fear from citizen enforcement at present. For responsible businesses, the only consequence of a ticket is free education as to the noise laws. The results of the past year of citizen enforcement have been outstanding. Numerous businesses in Midtown, The Village, and Corona have stopped unnecessarily blasting their music and advertising summons directly to the sidewalk. Citywide 311 complaints have dropped from 766,000 in 2021 by about 100,000 or 13%. That's overall noise complaints by 311 in New York City. That's insane. That's an amazing improvement. All that is really needed on top of our current citizen enforcement laws is better education, like the DEP immediately telling businesses when they get a complaint that they got a complaint. It's not hard. The DEP has failed businesses in that regard.
Time expired.
Can I have a little more time?
Time expired.
Max of quality of life improvement--
Time expired. Next witness.
The next witness is Janine Botta.
Starting time.
I'm here to testify about noise camera location selection. My name is Janine Botta. I live in East Flatbush, and I began advocating for use of noise cameras combined with an educational component in 2016, attempting to engage with my elected leaders, which was unsuccessful. I testified at the City Council hearing on the smart city on January 21st, 2021, citing cities throughout the world that were already piloting noise cameras. I'm affiliated with organizations concerned with acoustics and noise, but I'm not representing them at this hearing. I'm only speaking for myself and other New Yorkers affected by vehicle noise who live in areas of low 311 usage. I'm here to request that the City Council and DEP look beyond NYC 311 data and direct complaints to elected leaders when selecting locations for noise camera placement. A high volume of 311 noise complaints might represent a prevalence of high volume of noise, or it might represent complaint behavior. Low numbers of 311 noise complaints might represent a quiet area, or might represent a noisy area where residents are reluctant or afraid to submit low noise complaints. There are areas like mine where elected leaders don't have much interest in or knowledge of noise pollution as a health issue. Most residents here don't use 311 or complain directly to elected leaders, but they will complain about noise in NYPD, community council, or Build the Block sector meetings. I suggest the following three ideas about using broader methods of site selection, and I ask the City Council and DEP to consider the following. Outreach efforts that combine marketing and education as a means of giving advance warning to drivers, educating about health risks of noise, and marketing use of reporting noise. And I'm going to send in my updated testimony an October 24, 2011 TLC press release that did this in such a super fantastic way.
Time expired. Please wrap up.
Okay. Comprehensive--
The next witness is Deepmar Dietering.
Thank you, Committee. Thank you, Chair Gennaro. You have a packed agenda today, and I regret that I can only speak to citizen noise complaint matters. The city kept this noise complaint program a secret for over 50 years. When I inquired with the DEP in April of last year about how to submit citizen noise complaints under Section 24261, the department had neither information, nor forms, nor processes for this. To this day, the DEP publishes no information about citizen noise complaints. It does not, and to my knowledge, never did, publish any information about the city's rules against advertising noise pollution either. Why is that? To fill the void and to effectively answer all the requests that I receive about how to participate in the program, I've created a how-to that I've shared as a Google Doc, but soon you can find it online at NYCquiet.org. But it really should be the DEP providing that information. Please understand, Section 244B is not about noise coming from legitimate purposes. If a bar or restaurant is loud in the course of the business, then that is not advertising, and the DEP deems such complaints frivolous already. Such complaints will not become a summons, will not reach a respondent, and will not get to oath. However, if it can be shown that a business is purposefully placing or using a speaker to be heard by the general public, then such businesses must be held accountable for such nuisance. Enough with the noise, the city's full of it, and the noise code. But not just protecting our hearing, but also our attention must be enforced. Unlike noise from much of construction and traffic, advertising noise only benefits the polluter at the expense of its law-abiding competition in the neighborhood and all of us, New York's denizens. Making polluters stop has no effect on the industry as a whole, and all of us win some peace and quiet. Intro 160 is pro-noise because it would give a carton--
Time has expired.
--to any business seeking free advertising with noise. All they need to do is place the speaker--
The next witness is Leslie Clark.
Time starts.
Hello, thank you. I wanted to investigate some of the words that are being used here today. They're talking about advertising and just ambient sound. One of the representatives of a restaurant even said that they, why couldn't they have their ambient sound outside when they were having it inside? There are two reasons for that. One is that I live over those restaurants, and I don't want their ambient sound in my home. The second reason is that it's illegal. The other thing is the use of the term advertising in terms of noise. All noise that comes out of restaurants and bars is, in fact, advertising. It is saying to the people walking by, there's a party in here, come on in. And the reason why these things matter today, and the fact that these terms are not being used carefully at all in this discussion today, is that with the zoning text amendment that passed a year and a half ago, the, all restaurants will be allowed to keep their windows and doors open at all times that they are in operation. And also, with Local Law 121 that passed in August, no restaurant can be restricted in its hours to less than 14 hours. So that, put it all together, you've got, you have people, you have restaurants who've got, who are gonna be in business for 14 hours during which they will be allowed to keep their windows and doors open at all times, basically blasting their ambient music at me. This is not something that we, that we want as a city. The fact that people, that there are citizen enforcers out there is, in fact, a very good thing. And the fact that in this committee hearing, they were, it was said of citizen enforcers, they are more motivated by profit than by quality of life. In fact, that is an excellent description of many, many restaurant and bar owners who are much more motivated by profit than by the quality of life of their neighbors. Thank you.
Time has expired. Thank you.
The next witness is Alfred Fuente.
Time starts.
Thank you, Chair, for hearing me today, and thank you to the committee for considering these bills. I'm an attorney that represents restaurants and bars before the state liquor authority, before community boards, as well as before oath, and I oppose all of the bills before the committee. We live in a city right now that is not responding to the disorderliness, the noise. The police will not respond to our calls. We had somebody try to climb up the scaffolding of our building the other day, and we call the police, and they do not answer. I'm also flabbergasted that two individuals have caused 90% of these problems, and that no one is considering taking action against them, whether it's the restaurant bars that are affected that can bring causes of action against those two individuals. DEP, who is also profiting from the receipt of all of these, of all the revenue generated by these tickets, the Mayor's Office of Special Enforcement can bring proceeding against these individuals. There needs to be enforcement, excuse me, there needs to be action taken by the restaurants themselves against the people that are causing all of these problems and all of these violations to be lodged against them. I understand and appreciate how unfair it is to them, but nevertheless, it's also unfair to New Yorkers who are already living in a city littered with homeless people, marijuana use rampant everywhere, as well as open containers, and we do not have any kind of authorities that are responding to our needs. Because when you call the police, they don't, they don't show up, and when you call the precinct, you're told to call the police. So we're living, we're living in a place where the city government is not answering the neglect that is continuing-- the neglect that is continuing to grow throughout the city, and instead, we're going to be rewarded with more noise and more chaos throughout the streets. Thank you for your time, and thank you for considering my testimony.
The next witness is Deborah Farley.
Time starts.
Thank you. My name is Debbie Farley, and I have resided in Sunnyside for 72 years. My perspective on noise violations and who is most negatively impacted by it is diametrically opposed to those of businesses that gave testimony today. My apartment building is adjacent to two restaurants. Both have dining sheds, both have curbside dining, and one restaurant has backyard seating. All of my windows face either the street or avenue sides of these dining establishments. Because of the proximity of the two restaurants to my building, I cannot escape the raucous noise outdoors. In an attempt to deafen the noise, my apartment windows have remained permanently shut for the last three years. To watch television, hold a simple conversation, or get a restful night's sleep, my windows must remain closed. My stress and anxiety levels have risen sharply due to the interrupted sleep patterns. The excessive noise level makes falling and staying asleep impossible. Living with windows that are permanently sealed, never feeling fresh air, gives me a feeling of entrapment inside of my apartment. Both restaurants, dining sheds, and curbside dining areas are packed with large, noisy crowds every night of the week. Live entertainment is often on weekends, and performances are amplified with outdoor speakers and microphones. When there is no live entertainment, the music being played inside the restaurant is played to outdoor speakers mounted onto the sheds. Even during the days and nights when there are no customers seated outside, music is blasting speakers mounted onto the sheds. Sunnyside is a residential, family-oriented community. Living 20 feet away from these restaurants demands that measures need to be adopted to address the chronic noise violations and lack of enforcement. Exposure to hours of continuous loud noise contributes to sleep disturbances, sleep deprivation, high blood pressure, heart disease, anxiety, and stress.
Time has expired. Thank you.
At all ages.
The next witness is Ernest Weld.
Time starts.
My name is Ernest Weldy. I'm speaking in opposition to Intro 1194. Removing the only productive thing about the noise code incentivizing citizen enforcement is an awful idea. I live in New York City. Although I have not filed any noise complaints myself, I fully support the citizen reporting component, and I participate in the citizen component of the idling law. For my day job, I'm an attorney and a legislative director at an environmental health-based nonprofit. I study legislation and work with legislators to enact protective laws. I believe that the noise law should be amended for clarity, but you all should be extremely skeptical of what Intro 1194 will actually do. It will destroy the citizen component of the noise complaint system, the only thing that is actually working to protect residents from excessive and unlawful noise. New York City's citizen program is the best legislation in America that I know of to deal with daily microviolations such as excessive unlawful noise, giving citizens the power to report these violations and receive percentage of the proceeds as pure genius and the model to emulate. Councilmember Powers is absolutely correct. Noise creates a lot of health issues. Excessive noise is a major environmental problem affecting the health and well-being of residents of New York. Noise creates a broad range of issues, including general annoyance, sleep disturbance, negative effects on the cardiovascular and metabolic system, as well as cognitive impairment in children. Excessive noise can take years off one's life. Intro 1194 passes, it will regulate the noise reduction program to the silent night program of Bloomberg's, the same in dark and lonely place, zero enforcement. A minuscule number of tickets were issued before this and after. If 1194 passes, a minuscule number will pass. There seems to be a focus on what citizens are making on this program and accusing them of abusing the system, but the real focus should be on how much benefit the citizens have brought to these communities by making them more peaceful and quiet places to live. Excessive unlawfully loud noise is a huge environmental problem, and there was no enforcement. This year, there is enforcement, and we are seeing huge changes. Chair Gennaro, I saw that you identified the citizen enforcers as the fly in the ointment. Unfortunately, I believe you got it wrong. Excessive noise from commercial establishments is the actual fly in the ointment. The ointment is the peaceful enjoyment of our environment. We New Yorkers have a lot to deal with. Excessive noise is one of those, and this is a program that is stopping that excessive noise.
Time has expired. Thank you.
The next witness is Diana Mauer.
Time starts.
Diana Mauer.
Time starts.
The next witness is Hunter Severini.
Time starts.
Hello, my name is Hunter Severini. I'm a resident of downtown Manhattan, and I would like to testify against any and all bills weakening citizen noise enforcement, particularly the two bills that were mentioned earlier, those being 1194 and 160. I live in the Central Business District, and like Debbie who just testified, I literally cannot open my window. It's a nightmare. I live on a high floor. And yet, I don't ever get to have fresh air, because any time I do, it's just a constant barrage of noise. So my suggestion to the council is that they should look into using technology to enforce noise, such as unnecessary honking, which is like a virus in this city, or like a cancer pretty much, because it's like we don't know how to get rid of it. You know, and there are other things, even dog barking. I mean, the DEP is in charge with enforcing stuff that they basically, they're under-resourced as well, but they also don't really go out of their way to help. I've made numerous complaints about things that have, you know, had most gotten a letter in response, not any kind of like in-person visit, which is, you know, them kind of saying, "We don't really believe you." And then, looking at all these businesses that testified, most of them seem to have been notified, but not done anything. Like, they all seem to have 10 or 20 violations. Like, I really don't think, maybe if they got a few at once, I really don't think they all came on the same day. So I don't really buy this. I think that these people are, you know, acting surprised, but we live in a country of laws. Ignorance does not excuse guilt. I think there are plenty of people who would have common sense after receiving one of these summons, say, "What is it for?" Go to the hearing. Oh, it's found in violation. They'll correct the problem. And besides that, I really disagree with the tone of this hearing. I think it's been conducted in a one-sided manner. You know, Councilmember Gennaro, I would appreciate much more impartiality from your end. I don't think the way that you've presented this is respectful to citizens who have taken opposing positions. Whatever, you know, the outcome of all these hearings and bills is, there are points to be heard on all sides. And that by openly saying that one side is right, it does not encourage people to come forward and testify against bills.
Time has expired. Thank you.
The next witness is Hayden Brockett.
Time starts.
Good afternoon. My name is Hayden Brockett, and I'm a lawyer, and my family, and I live in Manhattan. I've never filed a commercial noise complaint, so unlike the businesses and lobbyists who testified today, I don't have a financial disincentive here, but are in conflict of interest. But I urge the committee to oppose Intros 160 and 1194 because they will both harm New Yorkers' health and undermine citizen enforcement laws that are already on the books and working. Noise hurts our health, just plain and simple. And as Chair Gennaro and Mr. Holden said at the outset of the committee hearing, in the last 20 years, New York has gotten noisier. And that's because, right now, for the most part of our noise code, the so-called objective standard actually means no enforcement. That's how businesses like it. Almost no noise enforcement takes place because only the DEP or the NYPD can issue a ticket, and they don't show up for seven to 10 days, and they don't write summonses. You need boots on the ground. Citizen enforcement works. Complaints are down 13%. And if you want to tweak around the edges, fine, but you don't need to change the law. Councilman Holden, you asked for feedback, and as written, Intro 160 will make it impossible for ordinary New Yorkers to make commercial noise complaints. If it passes, in effect, you'll have that same system that you were talking about that you don't like, where it's only the DEP or the NYPD. That'll be everywhere, and there will be no effective enforcement. Only if the DEP shows up at the right time with the right equipment, and it can get the offending business when they're still doing it, will there ever be a violation issued? That is not an objective standard. That is an unenforceable standard. This system doesn't work for other parts of our noise code. It does work for commercial noise pollution. Commercial noise pollution is about money. The businesses who pump speakers onto our streets for every passerby to be assaulted are in it for the money. Weed shops make money when people walk in the door. And so do bars and restaurants. They actually, the bars and restaurants that break the law are hurting the bars and restaurants.
Time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next witness is Michael Streeter.
Time starts.
Hi, I wanted to express my support for most of the introductions being discussed today. I think they're mostly solid and necessary, and I want to thank Mr. Powers for introducing them. But I wanted to use my time to speak out against Intro 160 and Intro 1194, even though I've never filed such a complaint myself. 3-1-1 has been completely useless in addressing noise complaints for years. Nothing happens, and if someone does get sent over to inspect, it's a Michigan J. Frog situation where you'd have to luck out that they show up at a time where the noise issue isn't temporarily off or long gone. Or you get an officer who tells you, "Hey, this is New York. Go move to Ohio." It's a joke. We all know this. We need video and audio evidence from citizens. I disagree with Chair Gennaro's statement that there was enforcement before the bounty hunters came along. There has been a huge difference since citizens have been submitting complaints, even just six of them. Gutting this citizens program would take away the most valuable tool that we have in addressing illegal noise pollution from food shops, restaurants, weed shops, the cell phone stores, and the like. We shouldn't have to put up with this. You know, these lawyers got to go on earlier for like 20 minutes, and it really seems like they're running the show here. The fact remains that commercial noise is a huge problem. One thing I wanted to bring up that hasn't really been discussed is that this music when you pass a food place or a weed shop or whatever, it's overstimulation, and that's something that a lot of people struggle with, or they're struggling with this with their children or loved ones. There is enough noise from traffic, but music of varying levels of volume and annoyance to divert our attention, which is advertising, that's illegal, and we didn't opt into that.
Time expired. Thank you. Thank you.
The next witness is Michelle Campo.
Time starts.
Hello, do you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good, okay. I represent most of Little Italy in Manhattan, as well as the Bowery Block Association. The idea of weakening these intro bills that has been long accepted, the bills have been long accepted, hard-won with restrictions, and won in restrictions because what is recommended is an assault on myself, my family, and the residents of New York City. Restaurant noise is already at ear-damaging levels with little to no compliance to existing restrictions, no adherence. Calling 3-1-1 is kind of a joke, a rough joke. Community residents are, or should be, as important as the restaurants. Unbelievable to even propose 14 hours a day. Noise pollution is well documented as having adverse health outcomes. Are individuals to be considered more important than... Our, excuse me, are restaurants to be considered more important than residential well-being? I think that's what you're trying to say. Residents also work from home, and we need our sleep. Also, legally speaking, as was mentioned before, ignorance of the law is not an excuse. And I agree that this has been a very unbalanced hearing, very. We're all very frustrated and very annoyed, and we live here, and we've lived here all our lives, and you should have some respect for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next witness is Laura Sewell.
Time starts.
Laura Sewell.
Time starts.
My apologies. I'm having trouble with my laptop. I'm Laura Sewell. I'm the Director of the East Village Community Coalition, which has long worked to support the local individual businesses that make our neighborhood unique and to support local residents in seeking a balanced quality of life in an area well-known to be oversaturated with nightlife establishments. And I want to thank everyone contributing to productive conversation on this today because we definitely need additional help. One thing, outdoor speakers have always been and should continue to be prohibited in outdoor dining in New York City. The burden is on residents, as always, to support, report them, and work with the community board, council office, and precinct to educate businesses and work to get them removed, but we have had some success with that in our area. I know it's not citywide, and it should be. But we do want to clarify that we are only talking about sound emanating from within a business here, to my understanding. I guess that's a question. You can tell me if I'm wrong when I'm done. Our main comment on Intro 160 is that if the council's considering a change, rather than completely exempting what's commonly known as background-level music from within an establishment, why not define a reasonable cap on the volume of music? In decibels, not dB, a thank you to the gentleman for his cussing. We don't have the expertise to state what that level would be, but in layman's terms, if I have to shout to be heard by my companion passing by, or if the person on the other end of the phone wants to know, "What the heck is that?", it's too loud. For Intro 1194, you know, the city has increasingly turned to citizen enforcers for help with handling standing violations such as idling, and we find no reason why citizen enforcers could not be, continue to be helpful in enforcing DEP violations, given appropriate parameters.
Time expired. Thank you.
Some horrible things here today.
Thank you.
The next witness is Lisa Ann Chapman.
Time starts.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hi, yeah, my name's Lisa Chapman. I'm a resident living in a mixed-use neighborhood with a hotel, with a nightclub, and restaurants, that operate sometimes until 2:00 or 4:00 in the morning. And I've tried all means, 3-1-1. They also have a smog hog. You know, I've been to DEP and 3-1-1. The noise codes are... What's available to me as a resident who can't sleep is limited. And I just want to say that I can't, I just would urge, I understand the issues, but I would urge that we not be further restricted from our ability to live peacefully and get sleep, especially at 2:00 in the morning, anything after midnight. And I agree with what's said about, there should be a way to measure it. There should be a decibel level that's livable for the residents that also... You know, in this situation, the venues that the hotel has have glass walls and roofs that open up. So when the nightclub is in full swing in the middle of the night, the noise that's emanating from them is not one that a person can live with or sleep with. And, you know, I have young children, and I have elders here at home. And so I just think that there needs to be a recognition of the, that there has to be a level that's livable. And I just, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mickey McGee.
Time starts.
Thank you very much for having this hearing. I want to express my gratitude to Councilmember Holden for still being here. It is my understanding, although I can't see it on my own screen, that the Chair has left the meeting, and I hope his health is well.
I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. Jim Gennaro, I'm the Chair. I'm here.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Earlier in today's testimony, Robert Bookman, the chief lobbyist for the Hospitality Alliance and the prime architect of the Open Restaurants Program, testified that ever since the Bloombergs moved to move us to an objective noise standard, we have lived happily ever after, until recently with the emergence of the citizen noise complaints, the rediscovery of this law. the rediscovery of this law. I am here to testify that Mr. Bookman's happily ever after is my neighborhood's living hell. I live in the South Village. I live in the community district where we have 1,000 outdoor dining sites. We have so many per square mile. It is unbearable. So what Mr. Bookman has wrought, Mr. Bookman is seeing the return of. I want to share with you the sound from McDougal Street, which is around the corner, and I have elderly neighbors living there in rent-stabilized units who have reached out to our neighborhood group to ask what they can do. This is what it sounds like. I'm only going to play you 30 seconds of it.
The purpose of this hearing is to get testimony, not to put on a display. And so I'm not inclined to grant this. I know what noise sounds like, and I'm sure it's going to be noisy. Next witness, please. This is not testimony.
Next is Mitchell Grubler.
Time starts.
Mitchell Grubler?
Yes, I'm here. I'm with the Bowery Alliance of Neighbors. I'm a senior living in Mitchellama Housing. And it's not enough to restrict noise when it's just in the interior. The interior noise permeates to the outside. Doors open and close by the waitstaff and by patrons. I live across the street from a hotel with a bar on the roof. I cannot keep my windows open because of the noise that comes from that bar. And it's not just a matter of what sound can reach the sidewalk. The sound comes up from that bar into my windows. We would like to have fresh air in our apartment when the weather is nice, and I'm deprived of that right, of that fresh air as a result of the noise that permeates from that bar on the roof. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next witness is Susan Ginsberg.
Time starts.
Yes, hello. I live in the West Village, and I agree with all of the people that are very articulate about why we stand against these two new laws. We have been suffering, especially living near NYU's dorms, with noise. And we complain, I didn't even know that there was this thing of these bounties, but we call 311. We can call the precinct. And the restaurants, I have a bar on the corner that are not supposed to open their windows on my block for the noise to come in, that they are playing their music inside. And of course, they do. I live about three doors from them, and it's excruciating. I have to go 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, go into the bar and say, "Turn your music down, please." Do I report it? Sometimes. Sometimes not. I call the owner. We just, it's just not going to change. It's not going to stop until somebody says that you're going to be punished for this, or when you get your liquor license, that you have to abide by a certain kind of decibel level, and if you don't, we're going to find you. I mean, I just think that, I just think that that's the reasonable way to operate in New York City. We live here, and somehow, to the restaurant industry, that doesn't seem to matter. And we think that this is just an excuse for them to want with the new law that they can have outdoor dining with music, which we will, we're just going to have to leave. I'm a senior, and it's, 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 it just makes you want to cry half of our lives. That's it. I don't have any other things.
Thank you.
Next is Victoria Hillston.
Time starts.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, thank you very much for having me. I would first like to say that Intro 160 and I believe it's 1194, and your other bills are absolutely beyond the pale. I am a resident of Tribeca, 385 Greenwich, aka 71 North Moore, since 1982. Many of our neighbors left during the pandemic over the absolute chaos on our streets from the outdoor dining. The noise is absolutely untenable. And I would just like to say, quite famous restaurateur is above me, Carlos Almada. We've designed nightclubs around the world. Our work has been published. We've worked with Ian Schreger, Andre Blaz, really all the best and brightest. We've designed the most relevant nightclubs in the world. And I would just like to say that these bills are really just beyond the pale. New York City has become a laughingstock. We don't open our doors and windows and advertise. There isn't a credible nightclub operator in the world. They don't do this in Paris or London. And so I would also like to share in the sentiment that Mr. Bookman can certainly bring suit against these two bounty hunters, which really, nobody has ever heard of. And I am the last person in the world to be speaking out against restaurateurs. I would absolutely not do it.
Time expired. Thank you.
Next is Zach Weinstein.
Time starts.
Sorry, I'm having trouble with my computer. Yeah, hi, my name's Zach Weinstein with Save Gansford. Save Gansford is an organization that deals with quality-of-life landmarking and land use issues in the meat market in Far West Village area. As you folks know, noise is a huge problem citywide. This has been mentioned in almost every citywide survey. It's mentioned in the number of 311 calls. What I'm puzzled by at this hearing is it appears that the bad-fated actions of two citizen enforcers who are intentionally incorrectly interpreting the law is being used as an excuse to significantly weaken citywide noise code. The solution isn't to change the code. The solution is to correctly enforce the existing code. The specific concern that I have is the same that was brought up by the representative of Acoustolog, and they shortchanged themselves. Acoustolog is one of the most highly respected noise consulting businesses in the city. As they said, removing the unreasonable noise language from subdivision B of Section 24218 leaves only the specified decibel levels as a constraint upon noise. And the problem is that those decibel levels are specified as A-weighted decibel levels, DBA. DBA does not, contrary to what was said early in this hearing, mimic human hearing. At normal listening, music-listening volume levels, DBA filters out the deep bass frequencies. And as we all know, it's the deep bass that creates the noise problems when establishments are playing loud music. It's the deep bass that travels distances, that travels through the walls, that travels through ceilings, and creates the profound disturbances that community residents feel. It's essential that, you know, if the council wishes to rely upon specific decibel levels, they've got to be defined as C-weighted. It's the alternate way of measuring sound, of measuring decibels. It incorporates the deep bass and the bass levels, and more authentically replicates the disturbing sounds that people actually hear.
Time expired. Thank you. Thank you very much. That was very compelling testimony. I appreciate that, the bass stuff.
If we have inadvertently missed anyone that has registered to testify and has yet to have been called, please use the Zoom hand function if you are testifying remotely, and you will be called in the order that your hand has been raised. Seeing none, we will return to the in-person testimony. The next panel is Alex Stein.
Hot, all right, the mic's hot. All right, finally, it took forever for me to be able to speak. All right, guys, I'm primetime Alex Stein. I have a little mom-and-pop adult bookstore, and we get fined like crazy. On glory hole night, we play the music loud. We're getting fined. They're coming there. People are complaining, the bounty hunters, they're on us, partially because my wife's boyfriend is, well, her ex-boyfriend is a bounty hunter, but that's neither here nor there. Now, what is, my biggest complaint is on 45th Street at the Roosevelt Hotel, you have every illegal Venezuelan out there hooting and hollering.
That's off-topic.
No, 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 I'm saying, no, but I try to report them, right? Gennaro, no, 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 I try to report them for their sound, and they're out there, no, no, I'm saying, they're hooting and hollering. They're just going, "Ay, ay, 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 ay!", and then the Haitians.
Sergeant, turn off the microphone.
I try to report the Haitians, and then the Haitians, and then they're having a turf war, and I'm just trying to get their attention, and I'm trying to call the bounty hunter.
Can I have the microphone turned off, please?
But you guys aren't doing anything. I mean, it sounds like a little, like a fiesta quinceañera out there. They're just out there dancing. This is what it sounds like. This is what it sounds like. They're Bluetooth speakers. Gennaro, and I'm just, I'm just sick of it. I'm trying to complain, and I'm trying to live in the city. I'm a pimp on a blimp, and I'm trying to complain, and you don't do anything.
Turn off the microphone, please. This hearing is adjourned.